Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Today, this evening is April 16th. Welcome to the Foxborough Board of Selectmen meeting. I will go over the agenda briefly. At 6:15, we had met, opened up our public hearing early at 6:15, and we met with several members of the Library Committee, the Library Commission, and they gave, graciously gave us a tour for 45 minutes. So, I apologize for being a few minutes late. They gave us an update on, on the construction of the library. At 7 o'clock, we'll have some citizens' input, as we do every week, and we just ask if you have something to say to come to the microphone and introduce yourself. At 7:05, we have a citation to be issued to Ron Clough, who is the, who recently retired from the State Forest, and we'll be honoring him there. At 7:10, we'll do a brief chairman's update. At 7:15, we have two items from Sharon Lawson, the Town Planner, and the Planning Board. We'll be going over the town meeting warrant items that are remaining under the submission of the Planning Board, and we will be entertaining a joint reappointment of John Rhodes, who's an associate member of the Planning Board, and that will be expiring up until May 2014. 7:45, we're going to discuss the sexual abuse reporting policy that we initiated back in January. At 8 o'clock, we will have our board discussion on our town manager, Kevin Paco's, annual review as town manager. And at 9 o'clock, we're going to be going into executive session for two reasons: review some executive session minutes that need to be released and reviewed, and also to negotiate with non-union personnel. So, at this point, we'll do a pledge of allegiance. Kevin, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin citizens' input, obviously, we've all heard about the tragedy at the Boston Marathon. I'm going to forego any chairman's update this evening, and I just wanted us to spend a half a minute or so in silent meditation. Terrible tragedy, loss of lives for, you know, the children, residents of Massachusetts, and for a race that invited, you know, 80-plus countries in. I'm sure we all have our feelings of anger, resentment, whatever we want. So, if we could just spend 30 seconds to just, as a tribute, and also just to remind people that our flags are at half-mast, and if you have a flag, until further notice, we're being asked to put our flags at half-mast in memoriam, so. Thank you all very much. So, at this time, actually, I'll talk a little bit about at 6:15, we met with the Board and Library. They were gracious enough to give us a tour, kind of the big-picture items. They're looking to open, what, the end of June, beginning of July. It's a fabulous building. There's something in there for the seniors, the young adults, the children, and the general public with meeting rooms. So, if you get a chance, I'm not sure if there's going to be any pre-openings, but certainly in June and July, I look forward to visiting the town and that group of volunteers, spend a considerable amount of time and effort to bring it to that point, so I'm looking forward to it. So, at citizens' input, is there anyone that wants to say anything? Sure. So, we just ask if you could introduce yourself, your name, and your address, please.
My name's Ed Galli. I live at 56 North High Street in Foxborough. I'm just going to read this verbatim from here. Dear committee, I am here appealing to you today to first aid me in obtaining a comment sheet that was blocked, that blocked me from an interview during a recent hiring process at the Foxborough Fire Department. Second, I ask that you review the hiring process in place, in place at Foxborough Fire Department, ensuring that it is fair, open, and biased. Here's my story. I've proudly served the Foxborough Fire Department, I've proudly served the town of Foxborough as a call firefighter for the past nine years, and for four years as a paramedic. I'm also a military vet. I applied for full-time employment during the last two hirings at Foxborough Fire. After the first hiring, I received a letter stating that I was on a short list of individuals being interviewed for the next round of hire. At that time, at the time of the next hire, I was told by Chief Hatfield that he had squashed the list, and a new point system had been put in place.
Ed, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Sure.
I have a little bit of leeway on the, on the open-meeting law. It sounds like this is an employee issue where you looked to get a job and you weren't hired. I can't have this at the open mic because it puts the town a little bit in liability if we don't have a response, and it's a personnel issue. So, the two things that you ask for, if you're asking for a document, and us to review the process that's going on, I would suggest if you could sit with Kevin and put something in writing, and then we can review it. But to have you at open mic talking about staff and why you weren't hired, believe me, it doesn't do anybody any good. It might, you know, for the, for the minute, but I just can't allow that to happen under the open-meeting law.
Okay.
I hope you understand that.
I do. I've passed along what I have here that I could...
Can you get this to...
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
The minutes?
Yep. And I don't mean you any disrespect, but I think, I've seen this before, and it just, it goes in a direction where it just, it doesn't end well. That has everything you'll need, anyway. Okay. So, Kevin, can I ask you, when we get this to you, and you can set up a meeting if you need me as chairman or one of the other members to sit in?
Sure.
Just so we can understand exactly what he's looking for, and so...
Sure. I'll get a memo, I'll get a memo back to the, to the board and to the gentleman, based upon my review of the facts and understanding of whatever the issue is.
Okay. You okay with that, Ed? That makes sense? All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else under citizens' input?
I'm going to read this. It's an announcement to everybody. Beginning Monday, April 22nd, the Water Department will be conducting a nighttime hydrant flushing, weather permitting. This program is a two-pronged approach to solve two problems. The first of these is flow testing to enable the development of a computerized hydraulic model of the water system. This model will give the Water Department much better control of the system, and will answer many questions, not the least of which is whether we can avoid expensive repair or replacement of the Main Street water tank. We know that the flow testing will stir up sediment in the system, so concurrently, we will flush the area where flow testing is necessary to remove as much sediment as is possible. We will limit the flow testing to one night per week, and will flush as necessary to clean up the affected area should it have brown water problems. The necessary flow testing and flushing is expected to continue for several weeks. Thus, we are widely publicizing the program. Our notification program includes mail flyers for every customer, half-page newspaper advertisements, Patch articles, Foxborough Reporter articles, and a dynamic map of the town website, on the town website, that will be changed weekly to highlight the area to be flushed in the coming week, so people will know in advance where the flushing is going to take place in any particular week. These articles and mailings include mitigation measures that can be used by customers to minimize the effects of the flushing, but please take note that there may be brown water issues. Calling in by customers will actually help the Water Department with the cleanup after flushing, so please call in and let us know where and when the brown water problems occur. This will speed up the cure. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. So, just in, there's a lot of information, and I know just about every citizen watches a selectman's meeting live. But if not, just in summary, how are you going to get the information out?
The mail flyers are going to every customer in the system.
Okay.
Frank's already done an article in the Reporter. Patch has done one article, but they're going to do another.
Okay.
We're doing, we've done three full, half-page ads so far in the Reporter. We got, I think we got some more to go.
Okay.
We're contacting all the big users, the apartment owners and their representatives, to let everybody know. And we've already suggested, you know, mitigation measures on, on just about every big apartment user in town.
Okay.
So, that's about as far as we can go. The mailings will take place this week. And we've had a, we've got a special little card made up with the whole, just about what I read on it.
What about, when people go onto the town website, there's a button you can click to get emails for all the important meetings, so if you get Planning Board, Conservation, Water meetings?
We actually have, we have a button just for the, for the flushing. And you can click on that button, and it'll bring you to the map. And the map's dynamics can be changed every week.
But will an email go out to the people? If they don't go onto the website, will they receive an email?
No, but what we did do is we made arrangements with the chief of police to use the reverse 911, you know, on a limited basis. And we're going to do that, too. I think we've gone about as far as we can go to get the notice out.
Yeah. Okay. Any, any questions from the board on that? Thanks, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Okay. Anyone else under citizens? Okay. Ron, would you mind coming up to the table? And also, Chief, Chief, did you want to come up also? You have something also? You can sit down. Yeah, relax.
We'll surround you with some blue coat.
I can say, first of all, thank you for coming this evening. I appreciate that. Ron, I met you about 15 years ago, and you probably don't remember. I was doing a, an engineering project over in Franklin, and it was for a manufacturing building. It was just about exactly 15 years ago. And when we do permit projects, we submit them to the town, and then we kind of reach out to the neighbors to see if, you know, we covered all the bases. I showed up at that meeting, think I had everything covered. We made our presentation, and you stood up 15 years ago, and you said you were representing the State Forest. And I said, "Well, we're not in the State Forest." And you said, "Well, you can see it from the State Forest." By the time that we got finished with that project, it was 38 Forge Park up on top behind the train station. You had us move all the condensing units to the other side of the building. You had us paint the top green, so you couldn't see it from the forest. And you put us, you asked us for, which I thought was a ridiculous amount of landscaping, because my, you know, you wanted a buffer. And I said, "Well, it's buffering the forest. Why do I have to buffer the forest?" And you told me why we had to buffer the forest, so you were tough then, and...
Sorry.
So, even with that said, we wanted to offer you a, a citation. And I apologize. There was a, there was a ceremony that they had for you, and as chairman, I missed it. I didn't show up, and this was our way of saying, "Sorry, we missed it." And you've got, I know, up on, actually, you know what? I did a little reading about you, but do you want to spend a couple minutes and explain the position you had for about 40 years and what you did, so people get a better perspective of, of your history in the State Forest and up on Mill Street?
Well, sure. It was 1972. January of 1972, then I started in the Boston office for the Department of Natural Resources in the Planning Division. I was a little bit younger then, and I had a great job, but on a beautiful spring day, looking out through the dirty window of the office building, onto the roof below with pigeon crap, stuff all over it, it just wasn't me. I had to be outside, so I left that job. And I became the first supervisor of the Boston Harbor Island State Park. We took over 13 islands, made it into a state park in 1975. And had some other, I worked Miles Standish and Hopkinton and a few other parks around, but I came to Foxborough in 1986 as the supervisor of the State Forest. And we started a goals plan, which is like a master plan for the forest. And we got a lot of local citizens on the committee, held public meetings, impacted some of them right in this room. And from that, developed a wonderful relationship with the various user groups, the various town officials, selectmen, conservation, planning boards. And it's gone on ever since, a wonderful relationship, I think. But the time in my life came where I was getting a, I'm older now than I was, like all of us, and the time just came to retire. I reached my retirement age, and, so I did. I don't miss the commute. I live in Hingham. I've known Kevin longer than you folks have. A long commute. I don't miss that at all. I love laying in bed, listening to the traffic reports in the morning. But I do miss a lot of the good people that I've worked with over the years. Not worked with, but folks, you know, like you all, and many in the audience, too. But I enjoy my free time at home.
Well, on behalf of the town, we appreciate it. You've been a great steward of our asset up there, between the walking trails and the bird watching and the motocross that goes up there, and the skiing. I mean, there's a little bit of everything up there.
There is.
And the fire roads. You've taken care of it very well for us, and we appreciate that. So, I know Fire Chief Bagley, Assistant Bagley and Fire Chief Hatfield have a citation we also, as well.
Well, Ron, it's been a pleasure. I've known you my whole career, and I think ever since you've been in Foxborough. Ron has been a very valuable resource that we've counted on for many years. I can think of more than one occasion where we've tapped his expertise to locate a trail, or with some assistance, trying to find somebody in the State Forest, or the best way to get to a fire, or, or something like that. But he's always been there for us, and we're very appreciative of all the time he's spent here in town. And we wish him well on his retirement. And we have a citation from the Fire Department. It reads, "Certification of appreciation awarded to Ron Clough, Forest and Park Supervisor, F. Gilbert Hills State Forest, for his dedication and professional commitment to excellence in support to the Foxborough Fire Department for 27 years. Dated April 16, 2013, signed by the chief and myself." So, thank you, Ron.
I'm going to have to build a wall in the middle of my living room to hang up.
And then Lorraine wants to read the one that the selectmen have you as well.
This is an official citation for the Board of Selectmen, Town of Foxborough, for Ron Clough. Whereas after almost 40 years of service to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Ron Clough retired from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. And whereas for 27 of those years, Ron was the Forest and Park Supervisor of the F. Gilbert Hills State Forest in Foxborough, Massachusetts. And whereas in the line of duty, Ron persevered in the goal of preserving and encouraging the responsible use of the State Forest. And whereas as liaison to the Town of Foxborough, Ron met monthly with concerned citizens of Foxborough to deal with the issues of the management of the State Forest. And whereas for the pleasure and edification of the citizens of Foxborough, Ron regularly conducted tours of the State Forest. And whereas over the years, Ron has helped and encouraged members of the Boy Scouts of America in projects of merit. And whereas as supervisor of the F. Gilbert Hills State Forest, Ron, along with the dedicated staff and crew under his direction, has enhanced the prestige of the Town of Foxborough because of the location of the State Forest within the town, and has truly added to the reasons that Foxborough is known as the gem of Norfolk County. Therefore, the Foxborough Board of Selectmen offers its sincerest thanks to Ron Clough for his dedication to his position as Forest and Park Supervisor at the F. Gilbert Hills State Forest to the benefit of the Town of Foxborough. The Board of Selectmen also wishes Ron Clough a happy, fulfilling, and well-deserved retirement, given the 16th day of April 2013.
Thank you, Ron. It's been our pleasure.
And I remember meeting Ginny. Well, Ginny came to our centennial event in 1998 at the State Forest. We had, when the department turned 100 years old back then. And that cake that we had was still, still is the talk of the town. Thank you all.
As I said, we have a pretty full agenda. We have a couple action items. If I could ask you to go to the action items, I wanted to take one out of turn. I see Officer Noonan here for the Diabetes Road Race. So, it's action item one. It's a request by John Hurley and Richard Noonan to conduct the 13th Annual Foxborough, Foxborough Against Diabetes Road Race on Sunday, June 1st, 2013. So, you do have an application in here. You have, it's signed, and I believe you have sign off from the police and the Fire Department on this.
That is correct.
How are you?
Hi. How are you?
Good. You want to just introduce yourself?
My name is John Hurley.
John Hurley, okay. Any questions on the application, or do you want to make a brief presentation? I know you've been in here a bunch of different times since you're here.
I just wanted to first thank you for the opportunity to see us. Foxborough Against Diabetes is going into our 13th year. 12 years, we've had no issues with public safety, and we've had a very successful race, not only with the involvement of the community, but also the, the local establishments, businesses, and, you know, Foxborough and the local community in general. So, I hope that we take our public safety very seriously, and we hope that we are able to continue to have temporary road closures for our event, and we hope that we can continue to do that this year and for years to come.
Thank you, John. Say hi to Dee for me.
I will.
Any other, any questions from the boards?
I see you have in your application that you'll be putting up notice signs so that the neighbors know that, in advance, that the road will be closed for a certain amount of time, and that's really appreciated, because I think that will help a lot.
Sure. I can give you just a brief overview. Not only are we going to be doing, two weeks prior, putting up signs, but we're also going to be putting a letter in the Foxborough Reporter, establishing some information on Cable 8, a reverse 911 called the Thursday prior to the event, and hand-delivering to the Nupuntis Street community as well the day before, just to make sure last minute that everybody knows.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
It's just Nupuntis ad that's going to be closed for that time, that whole time.
And Nupuntis Street will be the only street closed the entire time, which is about 50 to 60 minutes.
Right. I move that we approve the 13th Annual Foxborough Against Diabetes Road Race to be held on, is it Saturday or Sunday?
It's Saturday, June.
Saturday, June 1st.
Second?
Motion made. Seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. It's a good cause. Good luck.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
The other gentleman for the road race is here, too.
Oh, is he here? Okay. Okay, sure. Yep. Okay, action item number two. It's a request by Ed Widerhold of DMSE Sports, Inc., to hold a Harvard Pilgrim, finish at the 50-10K Run Walk on July 30th, 2013. So, in your packet, you have the application. You also have a map, and we also have, seems like it was a comparison between last year and this year, and the differences?
Correct. Yeah.
On, on duration and miles on public road.
Yes, we made a significant change last year to cut down the amount of time that we're on public roadways. We'll just be on North Street to Young and Edwards, and then loop around and come back again. So, it's just one and a quarter miles total of roadway. The reason we did this, we added the 5K last year, which is totally on Patriot, on Gillette Stadium property. And it was such a hit with everyone running up the ramps and coming down on the field and finishing at the 50-yard line, that we incorporated that into the 10K, which allowed us to not use as much of the roadways in Foxborough. So...
And at the end of that, that's the night you do the free fireworks?
Exactly.
Anyone that wants to come?
Yeah. We want it to be a huge community event. I mean, there, I think we had over 250 residents that were participants, and I think it was well over 50 children that were part of the kids program. And then, of course, the fireworks afterwards.
Sure.
And that's also, Jim, that they also incorporate volunteers in the community to help with fundraisers, like the 9/11 memorial, the Mitchells did. We got, I think, 30 volunteers that got together.
Oh, you had to help with the paperwork and everything, yeah.
And then they made a sizable donation to that effort. So, it's really appreciated. It really supports, it supports a lot of charities in the town, food pantry, all that, so...
And then, kind of the same, similar question that was posed to the last one. You're going to be closing off roads for duration?
Yes.
On North Street, which I live off of, so.
Yep.
Beet Street and up. What are you doing for the residents with respect to the elections?
What we're going to do, I think, on one of the sheets here, but basically through the websites, we'll go through the local news outlets. We're going to do letters to all of the residents. What we'll do is go door to door, and we're working on, we've seen in another event, to do a door hanging that will have all the information, all the details of the event, the phone number to call if there are any issues. We've worked closely with Chief O'Leary as well to come up with this course. So, we ideally would love to have the whole road closed, so there are no incidences, but Chief will be there with his officers to make sure if we need to let someone in or out, that we'll be able to do that.
Okay.
We also have it that as the runners have completed the, the turn on Edwards and the coming back, we'll open up the roadways as soon as possible. And stragglers, if we have walkers, because we do have walkers involved, we're basically going 15 mile an hour, I mean, 15-minute miles to, for pace. And if they're beyond that, we're going to have them walk on the sidewalk, states of the side of the road, so we don't have to keep the roads closed for any longer than necessary.
Okay. And in my comment, I was, should have been more clear. The reason I said I'm off of North Street, not because I'm opposed against, but just to let you know there's a conflict that I'm living on the road that this goes by. That's all.
I don't, yeah, I don't see any reason why you can't speak on it, so. I move that we approve the finish at the 50-10K Run Walk on July 3rd.
Second?
Motion made. Seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, so I am going to forego chairman update. At 7:15, we had the Planning Board to present the, actually, two things. The town meeting warrant review articles, but also there is a reappointment request for John Rhodes. He has been the associate member of the Planning Board, ending a year term, so starting, I guess, May 1st up until May 1st of 2014. Is there anything in the packet on this? It wasn't written?
No.
Oh, the, the letter, yeah. Okay. Okay, so in our packet, there's a letter dated April 12th to the selectman from the town planner with a paragraph describing, describing this. Hi, John.
Good evening.
How are you? Evening.
Good evening, John.
Thank you for members of the board for attending.
Long time no see, John. Kind of all summed it together. I haven't seen you since. Was I that bad?
Never ask an open-ended question.
Yes, yes, again.
So, I don't want to steal your thunder, but you've got a letter. It sounds like a unanimous recommendation, but you're welcome to speak, or if the board wants to speak first.
No, I'd just, just like to say that I would like to continue as the associate member. The letter has stated I've been on for quite some time. I have a very well-suited background. We have a very good board and a very good staff, and I'd like to continue to serve on the Planning Board and serve the town in that fashion.
Very well said. Thank you. Anything from the board?
Just really happy to have him. He's, you know, great engineering background, thinks, thinks a lot of other board members don't have the same perspective on. He's a thinker, and he's easy to get along with. He entertains us, you know, with his, with his skiing and climbing escapades in New Hampshire.
There might be a few old war stories in there.
Yeah. Nothing wrong with that. Okay, any discussion from the board?
No, I think, I think they make a great team, and John's part of it, so...
Just grateful. I've seen you in action, and I know your professional work as well outside of the board, so Tom's very, very lucky to have you volunteering.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion?
I move that we reappoint John Rhodes as the associate member of the Planning Board for a one-year term expiring May 1st, 2014.
Second? Second?
Motion made, seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Make it very easy for us. Yes.
That this is a joint meeting.
Oh, you have to.
It is a vote of both boards. And so it should be a vote of nine, nothing.
Okay, I thought that you guys already voted unanimously.
But we do, but this, we have to come to a joint meeting.
All right, that's fine, I apologize.
Do you need to open a meeting?
Did you open your meeting then?
No.
So open your meeting.
We did.
You did open it. And did you already vote, or?
You really opened it?
We always do.
Okay, so.
We are one of the most open people.
Assuming they opened their meeting. All right, so let's.
So let's retake this vote, then, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries nine, zero.
Is your meeting posted?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great.
That's how openly we post it, I mean.
You guys are way ahead of us.
And it's not often we get John in a tie, so.
It's a special meeting.
I noticed he's in a tie and sneakers, I like that. I'm going to do that.
So maybe we're going to make you an associate member? We'll get a tie on you one of these days.
Is it the sneaker category to get you?
I wore a tie for the 9/11 dedication. It's on video, I wore a tie.
Thank you for coming, and John, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. So we can go right into the warrant articles? Is Sharon here? You want to come up on to?
Where's Sharon? This actually is the same articles we presented to you previously, but we had a date typo in our public notice on the date for the town meeting. And Mr. Cutler, town clerk, on the side of caution, asked us to repost our hearings, which we did, and we held them again. Not surprisingly, with the same votes, results. And then we had to come back in front of you folks, just to go over it again, so that we completed the process.
So if you guys can help me on this, some of these we voted for, or some of them we held off. Last meeting we went through, I think, all the warrant articles other than the planning board.
These are the only ones left.
These are the only ones left.
And we don't have the numbers for the warrant, so we'll just have to give you what the title is, if that's okay.
Yep.
I tell you what, if you wanted to whisper, and I say what the title is, I will flip pages.
Article 20 is the first one. That's the municipal affordable housing trust.
Actually, was it Article 19?
The master plan?
Master plan?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about that one, yep.
That's the best one.
So that was to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $56,500 from free cash to be expanded by the planning board to complete the master plan for the town or take any other action. So do you want to?
And our explanation is the economic development analysis, and planning required more time and funds than anticipated when the funds were originally voted in 2011. We had extensive conversation with AdCom with a synopsis of what's been done to date, and where we're going forward, and same for this board.
Questions on Article 19? Discussion?
What was the discussion with AdCom?
We went over with AdCom the history of how we went from doing just a, initially, we were talking about doing a downtown plan, then we did a master plan, incorporated the downtown within it, and for the size of the project, the funding that we requested at the beginning wouldn't cover the scope of what we've, when we combine the two together. So we've been supplementing and adding chapters to that process with some of the grants that we've gotten, which has actually lessened the amount of money that we've had to come to request for town meeting approval. And we're going to continue to try to solicit more funds for some other segments of it, to try to keep the cost down.
Yeah, I just wonder, folks at home, to understand that, you know, this is just.
You can grow me.
Not as good as some people.
That's true.
Further discussion on the master plan, Article 19? Have a motion?
Motion to approve Article 19.
Motion to made, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Lorraine. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 19?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Article 20 is the municipal affordable housing trust, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law's 44, Section 55, establishing a municipal affordable trust for a period of time to expire July 1st, 2016, or take any other action. Give an overview of that article.
Sure. Basically, this trust could provide alternatives to the Chestnut Green developers. And since this is the only place in town where these alternatives, alternatives are needed, the trust will dissolve when utility is no longer needed, or if it extends to the full three years. The way that we've got the current bylaw proposed, there's a sunset clause at three years. So if we wanted to extend it for additional time, we'd have to go back in front of town meeting and request an extension, obviously with updates and reasons for doing so. And we put the sunset in there to lessen some folks' fears that we were going to adopt a state law that we would be stuck with for perpetuity. So we wanted to put the sunset in, give us a chance to see if the process worked. And in all honesty, depending on how the economy bounces back, we'll determine if we're going to use the full three years or not.
In kind of layman's terms, what's the benefit of this?
What we're trying to do is to work and achieve the affordability complex for the state hospital plan that we've all been working towards. But in the process of doing our master plan, we're looking at trying to take affordable housing and not just have it sent into one location. We're trying to move it without, throughout the town. It's been very successfully done. A lot of folks don't even know where affordable housing is because of the nature of the way that it's been done. We'd like to continue to do that. And the other thing is that the current prices, because we're locked in with the Boston pricing, it's difficult to build affordable housing at the state hospital. The market value just won't support that. So what we're trying to do is to take funding from that project, put it into a fund that is held specifically for affordability in housing, and that'll allow this board of directors, which we've talked about in the housing trust process, to reach in and use some of those monies with approval from the town. So we think it's a great tool, and it's, in our opinion, extremely necessary if we're going to move forward with the state hospital and reach some sort of conclusion in our lifetime.
If it wasn't for the state hospital project, would you still be doing this? Does it have applicability outside of that?
Well, the state hospital project, there's a requirement for the affordable housing. So if a project came in that was going to look for affordable housing, then, you know, we'd have to visit something like that. But this is a reaction to a project that's existed in town now for going on 10 years that we're trying to bring to fruition and survive the economy and the nuances of all that.
I mean, I think if we, if we saw that it was successful, and that the town saw that it was successful, there might be other opportunities going forward. But for right now, it's specifically to deal with commitments for affordability based on the number of units that were supposed to be built there.
So the developer would take that money, pay it someplace else in town, and then do another unit there that's not affordable?
No, they would put it in, theoretically, they would put it into a, into this trust fund. And the trust fund has a board of directors that includes members of the selectmen and others. And they would make a decision about, you know, where they might locate a piece of land to build an affordable house, by an existing structure, and make affordable housing out of that by utilizing some of those dollars. But a dollar amount would be set for the value of each one of those homes that's supposed to be done, or was originally supposed to be done right on site there.
But your question, the follow-up to that is, yeah, instead of that unit being an affordable unit, a market.
Market rate.
Bearing, yes, would be built there.
Yes, would be built there, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Yeah, okay. A question from the other board members?
Is this the same one that you can accept land or houses part of it as a donation?
The way, the way the state law reads, I believe you can accept either, yeah.
And that would be up to that board, that of trustees, basically, to you, two of us, maybe Kevin, somebody else.
Whatever it is.
Whatever the structure is, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was. Okay, great.
So then, when you wanted to purchase something, the board would bring forward a proposal to town meeting? Is that how it would work, if you wanted to?
The trust board of directors, we are, we would be out of it, the selectmen would be out of it. Not, some said we're out of it all the time anyhow, but we wouldn't be in this decision. That board of directors would do the proposal, and they would do the due diligence, have the fiduciary responsibility to make it work.
Thank you.
This article allows the town to accept the state statute, but does the state statute allow for sunset clause?
We've been told so, yes. We ran this by a couple of the state reps, the town council. So we felt this is the best process to use.
I've been attending the advisory committee meetings and, you know, for the different warrant articles. And when this was first proposed, I was, you know, I was really in favor of the housing trust as a vehicle to put money or land for the, but my concern was accepting a state statute because of unintended consequences of state statutes. It's my understanding that the advisory committee is going to be reviewing this once again tomorrow night.
First we've heard of it.
They're not meeting tomorrow night, are they?
As far as I know, they are, yes.
Tomorrow night, yes.
They just said, yes, you are.
First I've heard of it, first we've heard of it.
Is there, okay?
Communication's a wonderful thing.
So are you asking someone from our board will be there to talk about it? Yes, there'll be someone there.
Oh, okay, okay.
They've been, two liaisons have been meeting.
If you got to, you got to come to the microphone.
We have two liaisons, and they've been meeting with Sharon, talking, you know, through this, through this article, so.
Sharon's out of town this week.
Yeah, I know, I just went down to see her before this meeting. I didn't know she was out of town, but, so, we, you know.
This is the first we've heard. Now we'll have to have somebody there, obviously.
Yeah. I mean, the only reason I mentioned it was because information has gone, you know, I've learned, the first time it was presented, I've learned something. Since then, I've learned other things. I just wanted to hold off on my vote, maybe abstain, or maybe hold off on the selectmen's vote until the next, next week, have a meeting next week, only because I wanted to hear the presentation once again before the advisory committee. You know, before I meet up.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not meeting next week, Jenny.
Well, I'm asking if we could meet, because we're not going to meet on the 30th.
Yeah, our next scheduled meeting is the 30th, and that, that is the town and state election, so. It would have to be the 23rd. We don't have a meeting, but we could meet on the 23rd, if that's something that a member feels strongly that they want to hear input from the advisory committee back.
I mean, I would, I mean, I think it's an, whenever you accept state statutes, I think it's very important. You should really feel comfortable, if, in your vote, to accept it. So that's the only reason, I just wanted to hear one more time the information being presented. If you decide, you know, if the board decides to, you know, vote anyway, I'm just telling you, what I would do is abstain on my, on my vote. Because I don't want to vote yes, but I also don't want to vote no, until I get the information, so that's.
If we were, you know, as you know, the warrant article gets through and voted, there's going to be a recommendation from the advisory committee, and the recommendation from the planning board, the advisory gets, gets read. If we do put off the vote till the 23rd, how does that affect the publication of the documents that go to town meeting?
Warrant's already printed. You've actually got the final warrant in your packages, so there's no impact if you want to wait, that's no problem.
Doesn't affect any of the?
Well, wouldn't we also, we've, we've heard information on this, we just got a little bit more. AdCom's going to review it, and then there's still town meetings, so there's some safety guidelines in place, Jenny, if you feel powerful about it later. If you abstain tonight, you can speak out against it later, you know, I mean, we're all for it. So I'm saying, just to keep the process moving, we're talking to Kevin earlier, we get through our packet tonight, there's nothing for us else to do next, to have another meeting.
If, depending, if you get through the warrant tonight, and you get through all of the executive session business, then you're pretty much wrapped up. If you don't, then having a cleanup meeting probably would be a good idea, so that the board can finish all of those personnel matters and warrants prior to any potential changes the board due to the election. You wouldn't, I don't think you'd want to have issues like that hanging still.
Right. So I guess this depends on how good the meeting goes tonight. Is this the first bump of many, or is this the only?
No, I mean, I feel, I feel, I feel comfortable if there's a sunset clause in this.
But I want to know definitely that the state statute allows there to be a sunset clause. That's one, that's one of the things, that's one of the issues that I have, and I was hoping that that could be answered, you know, at the, that would be part of the presentation at the advisory committee.
Have you heard that it's, it's not viable to have a sunset clause? Is that where you're going with this, or you just don't know?
Well, I just don't, I just don't know if state statutes allow for a sunset clause. I mean, that was my, when this was first presented, I didn't, you know, I wanted just a trust between the planning board and the housing authority and, you know, just the town. And then apparently, once a state statute has been.
Enacted by the state.
Enacted. Town, town bylaws, yeah, you can't do your own. So.
I don't think we're going to be positioned to offer anything more than tonight, tomorrow night with, you know, AdCom. We certainly aren't going to go doing research tonight between now and then to see, you know, so.
You said that Dick said that, you said Dick Gellman said it was permitted?
No, we had talked about, because we tried to go the route of the home rule petition, and what we were told was exactly what you folks are just talking about right now. And that, as a matter of fact, this isn't the first time the town's been down this roll, road. We ran into it with the disability, wasn't it, last, last time meeting?
Yep.
And we had to change to meet the state standards. So, I mean, we'll be happy to go, but I can't imagine we're going to be able to mollify anybody's concerns tomorrow night.
Okay, so one more question about the trust. So at the end of three years, then, if there were assets still being held, how would those be handled?
The board would have to, the board of directors would have to disperse those. And I think, back to where they came from.
They came from.
Because they weren't used to the intended purpose. And you can't take them and buy a stream contract.
If it was cash, we'd go back to the developer, or land, we'd go back to the donor.
Was this what Sharon was talking about that gives us a better leverage as far as grants, too?
Not particularly. The old Commonwealth Capital score is, which, this would have been major league points on it, but they've abandoned that as a.
Oh, they did.
Criteria now. And we'll say this, I mean, we did, we did have people from the state come in and.
Now, we'll say this, I mean, we did, we did have people from the state come in and talk to us for a number of meetings about affordable housing. And this was one of the recommendations that they made. If you didn't have a specific zoning area in town or you didn't have a specific housing goal at, you know, before those things were set, we did eventually set one. But, you know, that, this is a way that a lot of communities have used in order to deal with situations like this. So where they have opportunities to get people in the development community to contribute into it and then the board, you know, would, would takes advantage of it and helps to purchase land or homes or both. You know, in order to fulfill their complement of the guideline by the state for affordable housing. There were some concerns. Jenny's concern was about the adoption of the state statute. After we, you know, pursued the home rule petition idea. There were some people in the Adcom who were concerned that they didn't want it to be a, a board so independent that they could just be in control of funds, spend money, nilly willy wherever they wanted, in any fashion that they wanted. So we tried to come up with a compromise that would address both of those items and put the sunset clause in there. And see, you know, how, how it goes. Give ourselves an opportunity to try it out and hopefully it'll be successful. If it is, the town will make a decision about whether they think it's viable and important to continue it. And if not, then we'll, you know, we would end it.
If you have a sunset clause, doesn't that, that means it ends? Like it, it ends on July 1st?
Sure does, but you could just, just the way, but just the way we're doing right now at the next warrant, you know, past that time or coming up to that time, we could submit a new one and say, okay, we'd like to, you know, create a new trust under the same guidelines or extend the trust another three years, 10 years, whatever, whatever the pleasure of, you know, the authorities were. And then bring that to town meeting for its approval.
And I remember Sharon saying it was important that the board, you had a sign for it and we voted that you would sign it, so. We've already supported this in our.
Yeah, we had a joint meeting and this was all explained to us where the.
This is the second time it's been presented to you and the first time you voted to approve it.
Right.
But the first time, did it have the sun, was it this exact wording with the sunset clause?
Well, the only, the only reason we're here is because of the date. It was incorrect in the newspaper advertisement stating what day the town meeting was. And so we had a public hearing with the very same documents. We didn't have standing room only for folks coming in. And we, you know, went through the whole thing. I mean, the reason we embraced this was because we're at a, we're at our wits' end on how we deal with the affordability portion of the state hospital. And quite frankly, we, we researched this because of what we heard and thought it was a way for this project to go forward. What'll happen if this doesn't get passed, if it's not adopted? We'll go back into the quandary of what to do and, and it's, it's our feeling and I think, you know, certainly anybody can speak up, but it's our feeling that, that this is what's going to allow us to go forward. And without a vehicle like this, we very possibly will not be going forward.
And you can't do it on your own because it's already set up for the state, so, Kevin?
If it helps the board, I can tell you a couple of things about these trusts. I don't know the answer to Jenny's specific question on sunset or not. But that's something we could find out before tomorrow night, no problem. With respect to what these trusts do, they're operated in quite a number of communities in Massachusetts. We had one in Hingham. And they provide a bridge between the public and the private sector in order to provide affordable housing and meet that 10% goal. We're a little shy of it right now. And this would probably, hopefully, get us to the 10%. Why is the 10% important? Well, you might believe that the goal of 10% is a socially good thing. On the other hand, you might also look at the fact that once you get to 10%, nobody can force a 40B on the community. Which is a real good thing, because generally speaking, you know, communities want development consistent with its zoning, the wishes of the people, pass a town meeting and they don't want 40Bs that aren't considered. I can tell you that there's all sorts of protections built into the statute. Housing partnerships can't spend money without town meeting votes. They're independent with respect to managing the property. Once it's either purchased with public money or it's donated from a private developer. They manage the property and they run the finances associated with it. In Hingham, if you go to the town hall and you go a little bit beyond it, you'll see a very large apartment complex which is owned by a religious order which the housing partnership bought and then funded the debt to buy it out of the rent receipts. And it's actually running way ahead of schedule in terms of amortizing the debt. Meantime, I think they picked up 100 plus units of affordable housing. It was a stunning success. And in a very high-end real estate community like Hingham, as you can imagine, it's very hard to meet affordable housing goals. Real estate values in Foxborough are also high, not as high as Hingham perhaps, but still relatively high. And it's also hard to meet the affordable housing goals here. Remember, when a developer does it, the best the planning board can do is shave a few units out of something. They can't get many. But this allows much, much better, in terms of numbers, allows a lot more affordable units to be purchased. So generally speaking, these are extremely good vehicles to do it. It's a combined housing development entity with a real estate management board, if you will. And in Hingham's case, we actually hired a management company that managed it and the board just managed the manager. And that's what a lot of towns do. So generally, these are very, very good things and I can tell you that they've been a stunning success all over the state of Massachusetts. There's dozens of them. So I can tell you that much. I can't answer Jenny's specific question, but.
Kevin has had his hand up. Do you want to take questions from the advisory committee or statements?
If he's got some information to answer Jenny's question, yeah.
Hi, Kevin Powers. I don't want to address this article tonight for the simple reason that Adcom has not yet voted on it. So because Adcom hasn't yet taken a position, I, you know, don't want to get into the details tonight. That said, at tomorrow night's Adcom meeting, when this article comes up, I and another member of the advisory committee have done what I think could fairly be described as relative to a town meeting article, some fairly extensive outside research. And we're going to be presenting that tomorrow night. And it touches on almost all of the points that have just been raised in, you know, to one degree or another. It, I'm not suggesting that it would necessarily be conclusive as, as to one point or another, but, you know, certainly, you know, as, as, as we spoke to folks and asked questions and looked into things, you know, there's, you know, there, it was, it was interesting and it, it might be worth, it might be worth learning about. Regardless of what the outcome of Adcom's vote ultimately is.
Kevin, do you know if, do you know if the, if a sunset clause is allowed in the state? Is that something you looked at?
Respectfully, because, because Adcom hasn't voted on this and, you know, because, you know, because we'll be talking about it tomorrow night. And also because, you know, I'm, I'm not the Adcom chairman, you know, Larry is.
Kevin, we're trying to come up with some information to help us with our vote. Are you the liaison? Do you have any insight that you could help us with? If not, we might not come to your meeting, but we need the information now.
You want me to talk about it?
Just answer that potential question.
We're friendly here. We're not going to, we're not going to get mad.
I, I don't know whether the sunset provision is enforceable. However, in speaking with folks from a couple of other towns that have been involved in implementing municipal affordable housing trusts, as far as the idea of a three-year sunset provision, one responded, well, you know, given the amount of time that it takes to get these things up and running. And as he described it, even, even just to figure out, for example, what would be necessary and what would not be necessary in a single-family house based on an income level of X number of dollars per annum and that sort of thing. Just the amount of time to get them up and running. The, the three-year period was, was not viewed by the folks that we spoke with as a sufficient time period. One of them remarked something to the effect of, and again, I'm, I'm working off of memory and the, you know, the, the other fellow that I was, you know, working with from Adcom isn't, isn't here right now. But I, I believe one, one thing that was said to us was, well, you know, it's, it's, it's a good thing that, you know, it could potentially be re-upped because you're, you're probably not going to be able to, you know, do much in that time period. And there's other stuff on other points, but, you know, I'm just trying to, trying to hold off as best I can until tomorrow night so that, you know, I don't sort of step on Adcom's, you know, feet.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Can we ask, would town council know or would I have to call the state host to find out? I just want to know. I just want to know if the sunset clause is allowed if you accept a state statute. That's all I want to know.
A sunset clause, just so that everybody understands exactly what that is, is a provision that says that when you adopt a statute, it automatically sunsets or becomes invalid in a specific period of time. I can tell you that this does not have a sunset clause. I can tell you that categorically. Now, I think the question that's being asked is, could the town repeal this at some point? And because it's an acceptance statute, the answer is always yes. But here's your dilemma. As Kevin just said, housing partnerships actually hold title to property, to real property assets. And generally speaking, affordable housing deed provisions run 10 to 20 years. So if the housing partnership were to hold title to 20 apartment units or to a building, the dilemma you'd have is if you wanted to dissolve it in three years, five years, 10 years, whatever, what do you do with the asset? You'd have to sell the asset. Now you've got an asset with affordable housing, with a covenant on the deed that allows the rents to only be at a certain level and you're trying to sell it with that restriction in place. You might have a real marketing problem. So.
Why would you have to do that, Kevin? Why, why wouldn't you be able to turn that right over to the town housing, the housing authority? They have, they have units that are affordable today.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. Perhaps you could. I, I don't happen to know. Kevin may have information on that. I don't, you know, I don't know, but the, I don't know of any failed housing partnerships where, or repeals where you had that problem. And what I'd want to hear, since it's been asked, and I apologize, I don't have an answer for you, is what is the answer to that question? What is the definitive answer to the question? Generally speaking, I think the success has been so good with these that I don't know that that question has been faced.
You don't think that the verbiage in there with the end date isn't a sunset?
I don't, I don't know. I'd want to talk to town council. I saw that as.
Well, the reason I say is because we've been saying that it is and you're saying that there isn't one in there. So that's, that's 180-degree turn of what we just talked about.
I don't think there's one in the statute for the very reason that Kevin is describing, which is, here's what you're going to ask a developer to do. Turn property over to the town.
No, we aren't asking the developer to turn property over. We're asking the developer to give money to the fund.
Money, property, some asset.
In this case, the reason, the whole reason we're doing this is the state hospital and it's specifically for money in lieu of building units, period.
Right.
And, and that's why we went down this road. So it isn't, we aren't asking them for, for land, whatever. We're asking them for monies. And it was a vehicle to purchase property someplace else.
So the question.
Our bylaw had the sunset. We didn't say that the statute had the sunset, but our adopting of this and the bylaw was.
You have a bylaw that rides over the statute?
If this, if you, the date on this says that it's for, till whatever the.
And town council has approved that?
This is as far, as much as any other article that's been submitted, he's reviewed all the articles.
Okay.
Does, does the town council review all articles?
I didn't get, yeah, I mean, I didn't get involved in the writing of this. This was town council directly with Sharon. And Sharon's away this week, so I can't tell that. I could, I just, since the question has arisen, I had the same question. I chose to remain silent because I thought I would just ask Sharon the question. But I don't know, with a specific expiration date three years away and we're going to ask somebody for substantial financial assets, I suppose a logical question for that person is going to be, well, what if town meeting doesn't re-approve this? Where does my money go? And I don't know. Maybe there's a covenant that provides for that and it says that money will go to the, to the housing board. I, I don't, I don't have answers to these questions, so I can't help you on that.
Once again, we're having a debate here at the selectmen's table that's carrying into town meeting debate where everybody, as I said earlier, we can vote it in, let the town, let the Adcom do their job. And everybody got something to say. That's why we have town meeting, to go over this for another half hour.
Yeah, but Mike, I think it's important that you get, have the discussion now before town, before town meeting. So at least maybe some things could be answered before town meeting. Because otherwise, if you get, if you have a town meeting warrant article and people are uncertain of it, they're going to vote, they're going to vote no. And I don't want a situation where town meeting, because they're not quite sure of it, votes no. If this is, if this winds up being, being a good article. That's why, right now, I don't want to vote yes. I don't want to vote no on it. I just want to get one more chance to get some information, have my question answered. And then I'm, I'm willing to support it. When, when Sharon first brought this up and she talked about the statute and I told her my concerns about, you know, adopting a state statute that will go on for perpetuity. And then she said, well, what, what about if we have a sunset clause or something in it? And I said, well, to me then, that makes it palatable. Because if it doesn't work out, then, then it, then it's done in three years. And my question is, is that legal to, to, on a state statute?
Let me help you again, let me help you again here, because I don't think there's any risk. I mean, we, we can get you a definitive answer, certainly. That's easy enough. But here's, let's assume for sake of discussion that you cannot have a sunset clause. In that case, this would be a defective, this would be a defective article. So the motion that would be made under the article would simply remove that, no problem. On the other hand, if it's found that in fact you can have an expiration date, either through a bylaw or be, now, I know for a fact, by the way, that the town planner talked to town council because I gave her access and I know she did that. So I'm assuming Dick looked at this and he's decided you can do it. Maybe there's a, certainly there could be a way to do it that I'm not aware of. Maybe a bylaw, maybe some other way. Point is, I don't think you have a problem here because if, if that's what's desired, either you can do it, in which case this is, this is accurate as it's written. Or you can't, in which case you have to change the motion. But either way, we can handle that problem. I think, so if the only question is the sunsetting part of it, in other words, if the board is supportive of this concept and the only concern is the sunsetting, then I would say to you, I think you probably have enough to go ahead and vote on it, one way or the other. Because we can resolve the sunsetting question later. For instance, you can make your motion to approve this as written. And if it turns out, it's got to get amended because you can't do this. That'll have to come back in front of you.
Well, I think we approve, we approve everything as written regardless.
Right.
So I, I look at it a little different perspective. If, the sunset clause doesn't bother me because I've, I've done a lot of work with municipal affordable trusts and they've all been successful. If you, if they, if they purchase a property and they put five units, they're five units of affordable housing. If a developer goes in there and does 100 units, only 25 of them are affordable, so you get 75 of them are not. Assuming that we can, you know, we're under the 10%. So even if this clause was not in here, I don't have a problem with the state statute. Yes, it's, it's better to do local because you can, in my opinion, you can, you can control everything. But this isn't a bad statute to adopt, in my experience. So even if it, you know, if we go through it and says there's no sunset clause and you're stuck with it, it's not a bad thing to be stuck with if it give us a tool for affordable, affordable housing. And, you know, affordable housing gets the bad rap a lot because it's affordable housing. We need it. Towns need it and that's the way they have it.
This board is stuck.
We need, and there's an obligation on behalf of the development group down there to provide it. And unfortunately, two things have come up. One is, is that because of the. One is, is that because of the cost of housing in that specific development area, it's much more difficult to provide the affordables there. And the second thing that came out, actually came out of the master plan, was when we mapped where the affordables were around the town, by far and large, they're all shoehorned into that section of town. So we could continue it. We could force it and say, okay, you have to build it there. It's going to be more problematic. It's going to take longer to develop the property. We're at a point now where they're ready to move a little bit more quickly on some of their development ideas. And that would kind of slow it back down again. Or we can say, okay, the developer has come to us and say, let's come to a number for a value of what each one of those would be, and I'll take that money, and I'll put it into a trust. Or I'll purchase other properties with that money, and, you know, we'll develop affordable housing. Then it could be under the management of the housing authority, or however that works. So, you know, we're trying to do, we're trying to do the right thing for the town, help the developer out of a quandary, satisfy concerns about, you know, how long the thing will go on. And, you know, we think it's a good thing. You know, we're not trying to, we don't want to force-feed it to anybody who really doesn't like the idea. But on the other hand, we think that overall, we're going to have to meet this goal, one way or another. And this is a positive way to do it. We think it can be a win-win for everybody. So...
The other thing that we know that, during our public hearing, we talked about, did we think that we could get this accomplished in three years? And the answer was no. Because in order for the developer, whoever that person is, is to allocate money, he's got to sell product. And the same is when we go to release lots. We don't release them all, but we have to release enough so that the developer can sell product to meet his obligations to his project, but also to the conditions of the town sets. So, you know, we don't think this is going to be a rush to complete kind of a thing. And as Kevin said, it's a vehicle that we're trying to use to move forward. If we don't get it, you know, we're not going to jump off a bridge over it. But it will put us back as a community and as a project, and we'll just have to see where it takes us. So...
Can we move this question?
I move to accept Article 20.
Second.
Motion made. Second and further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion carries 401 with Ginny abstaining.
21.
Article 21 is the amendment of a zoning bylaw to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 834, dimensional and design requirements by striking the words "indwelling units", following the words "to all lots" in the same sentence, talking about minimum distances between structures, minimum yards, changing tables, front 10 to 35. Is this mostly clean up?
This is actually, Mr. Casper actually asked to have this one, so...
Bill, there's standing up room up here.
Standing up room up here.
Standing room. The Table 1-8-1 is for the open space residential development.
There's a microphone.
In the zoning bylaws, Table 8-1, the open space residential development, that table is the dimensional requirements for houses within that open space. And ever since the beginning of that adoption of that bylaw, it says distances between structures. For example, front yard, it said, it didn't say front yard setback. It said setback between structures in the front. So, and the same thing on the side in the rear. So technically, you could have a house that's 20 feet from your neighbor's house. Your neighbor could put on addition on his side, well, he didn't have, let's say he had 30 feet. He put on a 12-foot addition. The other neighbor couldn't do it. First come, first served. And we've been having those problems out on Highland Farms. That's an open space, another open space situation. So this just clarifies that instead of between structures, it's to the lot line. That's all it is. Okay?
Simple enough.
I move that we support Article 21.
Second.
Motion made. Second and, under discussion, I'm assuming you guys have seen this, and you're all... Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 50. Thank you, Bill. Article 22, to see if the town of Foxborough will vote to amend zoning bylaw, Section 9322, requirements of changing the second A in Section 2 to 9321, or take, which is changing a word, "A"?
Yes. What happened was, in wordsmithing at the end, there was a typo. So we had to redo this article to correct that typo.
So it's just bookkeeping change. I move that we support Article 22.
Second.
Motion made. Second by Lorraine. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 50.
Said eight.
They said eight. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw to strike the word "dimensional regulations for residential use" and replace with Table 4, "dimensional regulations for uses in residential and neighborhood business districts".
No language.
Nothing substantive. It's just clerical?
Articles 23 through 27 are zoning board recommendations. And they were added really for clarity. They're non-substantive. They just, they just gave guidance to the board when they were making decisions. But there's no, they don't change any dimensional reg, they don't do anything other than add clarity. So the AdCom approved, all these unanimously approved articles, 23, 24, 25, and 26, which was done, 26 was done because it contradicted state statute, and it was never picked up. So we just wanted to mirror what MGL 48, the zoning act, does. And Article 27 is going to be acted on by the AdCom tomorrow night. Again, it's clerical, is whenever you have three attorneys on a board, everybody sees it a little differently, and charges double for it. And as they all said, the language was very tortured in Section 5.3. It was a mess. So this just clarified it, cleaned it up. Doesn't change anything. Just gives them guidance.
I think it's all housekeeping again. I move that we support Articles 23 to 27.
Second.
Motion made. Second and further discussion? Under discussion, and assuming you guys all concur with nothing substantive, more clerical?
Right.
All right. Motion was made to approve 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 50. Article 28 was the TIF, which we approved. Article 29 was the...
Easement.
Easement. For Baker. We already approved that. I want to correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I could offer a question for the chair. Would the planning board consider taking up the TIF and taking a position on it, hopefully to support it, so that, you know, per se, it's not an article that you need to? But on the other hand, if the Board of Selectmen and the AdCom, who are both unanimous in their support, if you were to lend your voice to that, I think it would have great import to town meeting.
Surely bring it up?
And would be prepared to come to the meeting if you'd like?
I'll be there anyways. Except for the alternate, maybe.
I think we covered them all. The stretch energy codes, where is that? We went over that.
We did not finish that one.
Which number is that?
Which one?
Stretch energy code. That's still outstanding in my mind.
I believe Ginny and I put that on hold. All Lorraine and I, we wanted to talk about that more in depth.
We got the marijuana one also?
Marijuana?
Medical marijuana. Is that...
That's all.
It's not in the document?
I don't think so, no. Did you withdraw that?
We...
At least you admitted knowing.
We had another public hearing on it, because it was the original...
Yeah, I don't see it in here, so I'm pretty sure it was drawn.
In case you're asked.
Yes. Sharon did call Sandy and take it up. There was an AG ruling pending. I think that's why it finally came down.
Well, we wanted to wait until the state certified its restrictions or constraints on what they would license, so that we didn't create a bylaw and then have to redo it.
Right.
And so...
Similar to like Walpole and some of our neighboring communities did.
So we're telling you now, I guess, that we're looking to have a placeholder in the fall, where we will have an article. Because it was an overwhelming vote in the community, we certainly have to address it for zoning. And we're, the vision that we're going to look at it, the way that the adult entertainment zoning was done, where we hold public hearings, and then we structure something that allows the use to be within a specific area of the community.
So that, just to be clear, that is not in this set of warrant articles?
But we've got that placeholder in the folder. I've got the special in the fall already, so... And to stretch, have we been talking?
Do we, I, did we vote in the stretch code?
No.
So Article 18, to see if the town will vote to amend the revised general bylaw.
I think you're right. I think you wanted to wait for the AdCom.
It got brought up last time. There was some AdCom that wanted to speak, and then we put it off till you guys were here.
I think the zoning enforcement officers said that it is not currently allowed, and therefore, we did not have to take a vote at this time. What's that?
He's talking the stretch code.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. I thought we were still talking about it.
So Article 8 is a stretch energy code, to see if we'll adopt a stretch energy code for the purpose of regulating the design construction, designing and construction buildings for the effective use of energy pursuant to Mass Building Code 780 CMR.
I'm about to put Bill on the spot. I think Bill has, you want to put some input on this before I do, or? I mean, because I...
Could you just kind of give an overview? I'm not sure everyone understands what the stretch energy code is.
The Massachusetts Building Code has a provision that allows, through local adoption, a community to accept a more stringent form of the energy, energy code. It's, it, as applied, it averages about, increases about 20%, makes the home about 20% more efficient, energy-wise. It also applies to certain non-residential, certain commercial projects. In the past, some of the questions that were asked to me, they would go, well, what happens if I have an older house? Do I have to comply with the code if I come in for a billing permit? And the answer is, if you were doing an addition, the addition would have to comply, not the old house. Some of the homes here are 150 years old. You can't make them comply. We will, Massachusetts will be adopting a 2011, 2012 International Energy Code within the next 12 to 18 months, which in effect will make the energy code, the stretch energy code, required in all communities. Right now, it's by local adoption. It's not uniform throughout the state. So whether you approve it now or approve it down the road, it's going to be here. It's going to be here in some form. Right now, by adopting it, it, you, it becomes one of the requirements that's necessary for the Green Communities Act. Whether there's money available, I don't know, grant monies for that. But it does make you eligible to, for grant monies, if adopted now. For us, in the inspection department, I'm going to be honest with you, it's an unfunded mandate. It's going to require extra inspections with two people in our department. So you'd want to consider that. But it's going to happen, and we've got to gear up for it, whether you vote for it or not. So I don't know how the AdCom, what their vote, but we explained it to them, and they did take a vote on it.
Thank you, Bill.
And this was on a couple of years back.
On last year's plan.
Last year. I missed, yeah, I missed last year's town meeting, though.
No, you actually spoke on this.
Was it this one? I'm trying to think. Was it the annual of the fall?
The annual of 2012.
I wasn't there.
You missed it. And it must have been inspected.
Because I was not there.
Your daughter was sick.
Yeah.
But you did speak on it. I remember that.
So, but, and was voted against by the town. So this is like Groundhog Day all over again. Let's just wait. My opinion, I don't want, I don't even want it as an article, so I'm not, I'm going to vote against it. It's just, it's increasing the pricing for building and increasing the pressure on the departments that have to inspect. And, you know what, if it's coming down the road, let's give everybody a little heads up in the 12 to 18 months, and say, you know what, it's going to cost another, I think on average, $3,000 more per house. You know, and there goes your grant account, it tops Ginny, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, I just think let it wait. I'm all set with it. The man's on, what we have to do now in the trades, and maybe houses have to be 2x6 walls now. All the 2x4s are thrown out. You already got R15 in the walls. It used to be R13. Every year it goes up, and the windows have to be more and more wind-impacted because of the hurricanes and the weather issues. It's just driving it to its unaffordability. So another penny, I don't need. Never mind more bills like this. So I advise that we vote against it.
What else? I apologize to the board. I didn't know this was going to come up tonight. We would have had a presentation for you, like we did for the AdCom. I appreciate all that's been said. It's my job to advise you that this is the last step for the town to become a green community. There's about a third of the towns in Massachusetts and cities have now done it. There's about $170,000 grant associated with this for energy retrofitting. That's the initial grant, and then once you're a green community, you become eligible for additional grants. From what's been explained to me, and Mark and Bill would know a great deal more about this than I would, this is going to be the law sometime in the next 12 to 18 months anyways. Most of the changes that you would do to new construction or additions to your home are things you would do anyways. I mean, who wouldn't put energy-efficient windows and insulation?
You have to by code. It has nothing to do with the conversation. You have to follow the code book, which is almost the same thing. What I'm saying to you is, they've driven the cost of materials through the roof.
Understood.
And, you know, I don't believe that there's any grants available. I have no evidence that there's any grants available to the town that's going to offset the cost to the town departments.
No, no. The grant is to the, is to the town for town-building, energy retrofitting, streetlights, lamps, whatever. We do it. The grant isn't to the homeowners or to the developers. It's to the, for town buildings. And once you secure that grant, then that opens the grant program so that we can apply for additional grants for continued improvements, energy improvements. I think AdCom did vote in favor of this, correct? No, you voted against it?
071.
No, none in favor, seven opposed. Okay. My apologies. Thanks. So, there you go. I think now you've got a pretty clear picture, in terms of what's at stake.
But I think on the, on the grant side, because I've worked on a couple of projects, that window is so short right now, because it is, as Bill said, it's an unfunded mandate. You know, that window is very short. There is no grants. The state's not giving out. The word on the street is, it's going to be mandated in short order.
Well, that word came from me, in my conversations with the OEA. Last year, when we tried this, nobody can say definitively if they will close out the grant program when they make the stretch code the law anyways. Logic suggests, and long history with federal and state grant programs suggests, when they provide grants to cities and towns to do something, they don't give you the grants after they then require you to do it, because the grant is an inducement to do it voluntarily.
That's what I'm saying. The grant, it's just, it's on the horizon. I'm working on two projects right now, and they've applied, and there's no money, period. It's not coming in. It's not going to come in in the next year.
That's what I'm saying to you. Because it's, the town grant, the $170,000 that we can get, is guaranteed. It's in the current budget, if we adopt this. Grants for homeowners, developers, I don't know anything about that. I don't know how that works.
No, I'm talking, the projects I have are municipal projects and they were denied. They're denied. There's, there's no, the state is not.
You're talking the second grants, not the initial grant. The initial grant is a formula grant. You do the five things, you get the money.
So you're saying Foxborough automatically gets that amount of money?
That's what they told us. Now, the additional grants that I think is what you're talking about, remember I said, then this pool of money gets opened up for you. It may be those grants. I don't know. I'll check that to be sure. But if the inclination of the board is you're opposed to this, then, you know, so vote and makes my research a lot easier.
Then we don't have to argue with AdCom.
I'm interested to see, you know, I'm going to get a hundred and something thousand dollars just for signing up for it. I'm interested to see that.
That's not guaranteed.
Well, that's what I wanted to know from Kevin because it sounded like he says you get that right away.
Yeah, I don't know, as we sit here tonight, I don't know if they're going to withdraw the, the grant program or what the status of it is. I'm sorry, again, I didn't know this was going to be on the agenda.
Bill, do you have any insight into the, that level of grants or?
Towns, towns don't seem to be adopting it the way they used to. I'll just, and I'm not aware of any grant monies that have been, that towns have received as of late. I think there's currently a hundred and twenty-eight towns that have accepted it. Originally, when this first came out, originally when it first came out, that grant money was made available to them. It was, it was a motivating factor to become energy efficient. It seems to be less and less as it be, we become closer to the fact that we are going to be accepting this, more difficult. So that's what I'm hearing. It's.
I think AdCom may know the status of the grant program.
Sure, Kevin.
Can you talk about?
Yeah, only if you're not going to say you can't talk.
Yeah, well, you know, we, we voted. So about a little over a month ago, when AdCom last met on this with the, the town manager, I, I asked Kevin who would be the, the individual who would be most knowledgeable at the state level. And he, he gave us the name Seth Pickering, who is the Green Communities Regional Coordinator for Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. In short, he is the individual responsible for implementing and conducting this program in this part of the state. And former or on leave AdCom member John Gray and I sat down with Seth Pickering a little under a month ago and had a rather wide-ranging discussion with him about both the stretch code and the Green Communities Program. I can touch on the details of the stretch code if you'd like, but since the question right now seems to be about the Green Communities Program, I'll just skip right to that.
Is there a grant available? That's what we want to know. If you can get to that because we're really behind the schedule here. We're at.
Sorry. It's, it's not known at a time, at, at, at the time that a town adopts the various items that are involved in the Green Communities Program, and there are five of them. And it's, it's not known when a town adopts those five criteria, whether there will be any money made available to the town. The Green Community Program municipalities do not receive just large block grants of money to use on appropriate projects as the town feels is appropriate. Instead, Green Communities municipalities, once initially qualified, must then go and apply for every single grant amount on a program-by-program basis. In other words, every single initiative that the town wants to undertake using potential Green Community Program funds is subject to a separate grant application process and may be allowed or denied on one project irrespective of other, other initiatives by the town. So merely being a Green Communities Program municipality is no guarantee that any funds will be available for any initiative.
So you'd actually have to make the application of the five different entities wait for it, wait for it to come back. It's not an automatic process?
Right. And, you know, even, even if you say, okay, you know, we have a ten thousand dollar program to do this and you get approval for it, you then may come back and say, well, you know, now we want to do a twenty thousand dollar program for the following thing. And that may get denied. And there's, there's really no guarantee. At least that's, that's how Seth described it to us. And, you know, as, as I say, he is, he is the source named to us by the town manager as, as, as the guy with the knowledge and certainly he was and he's responsible for implementing it. I can answer other questions about any of this too because, as I say, we talked with them about almost all aspects of this.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Motion not to approve Article eight.
Well, I think, I think you have to do it in affirmative.
Motion. Yeah. Yeah, who's got me stuck on eight?
Okay. Do I have a motion for Article eighteen?
Motion for Article eighteen.
Second.
Motion made second. A further discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Zero abstaining. So motion.
We voted against it.
Motion, voted against it? Motion fails five zero.
I think that finishes the one.
As far as I know.
I think it wrecks the budget too.
Yeah, and you already did the budget.
Join our meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for your time.
Nice to see you. Have a good night. Tom, when are we going to get together again?
Well, when, when are we going to start digging some dirt up again?
I don't know. I have a forward to it.
Okay. Congratulations. Finished the two thousand thirteen warrant articles. One hour behind. Let's step it up a little bit. We have the sexual abuse reporting policy that was presented to us in our packet. If you all read through this, this is something that the board asked for in light of the Sheen issue that came to us at the beginning of the year. And Kevin, can you just give us an overview of who put this together and how it got to this? Just kind of a summary of it. It's five pages.
Sure. We did a couple of months of research trying to find a policy like this from another city and town. Make a long story short, we couldn't find one. Seems like nobody has one. If there's one out there, we weren't able to discover it and we did a pretty far-reaching search. Lorraine had one at work and provided that to us, which is very close to what you see here, very comprehensive, very far-ranging. HR director took that draft and modified it so that it would be applicable to a, to a town, to a municipality. And the finished product has been looked at by a bunch of town officials, police chief, social service slash COA director, some other folks, fire chief, et cetera, and all have pretty much passed judgment that they think it's a good, good piece of work. I think it's a good piece of work too. And we're hoping that it's on point in terms of what you were looking for. This is basically an awareness and reporting policy for town employees. How to be aware of, what are the warning signs of sexual abuse in children? And what should you do if you suspect it? And that's basically what this policy is. And as you can see, it's quite comprehensive in terms of, you know, being hopefully helpful to town employees so that if they suspect something, they know what to do. And it gives them a way to do it and do it in a manner that does not subject them to any potential liability for making reports. So that, that's the balance we were trying to strike and I think it's a good policy. So up to you if this meets with your, with your approval.
I'm going to go first on this one because I, and I apologize in advance because I got it on Friday and I read through it and I've got some questions and some, and I probably should have talked, spoken to you before, Kevin, on this. I'm looking at this and it doesn't say sexual abuse just about anywhere in this document. It talks about malnutrition, neglect, fracture of bones, emotional injury, if you see something, you know, bruises, burns, lacerations, lack of supervision. It says if you find something, you go to human resources within forty-eight hours, they report it. It doesn't say anything about police, how to recognize, anything about sexual abuse. And I'm wondering if this just, on a scale of one to ten, this is the exact opposite of what I was expecting. And I apologize for not giving you, this is emotional injury by abuse or neglect, a boilerplate, which, you know, maybe it's good to have, but it doesn't say anything about volunteers, coach, you know, people working on behalf of the town that's spending time with children or abusing them with a sexual base overview at all on this.
Yeah. What I'm told by the experts is that having separate policies on physical abuse, sexual abuse, there's many forms of abuse, doesn't make sense because you could have twenty policies dealing with different areas of child abuse.
So if we have one policy, that's fine.
That's, that was the point.
So there's, there's nothing about sexual abuse in here that I'm seeing at all?
Section two point one A, the second paragraph, the last sentence, that includes the commission of a sexual offense against a child.
But how do you, if, if the, the notion is, how do you recognize it to be able to report it other than, you know, a sentence talking about everything else? This, this doesn't do anything for me. If I'm working in a town and I see little Joey being abused by a teacher or an athletic director or something, it, it, it doesn't even tell me to go to the police. It says, you know, go to someone with an eight hundred number and then forty-eight hours later, you have to write it down.
There's a specific reason for that. What this policy provides is a safe way, a, a lot of people frankly are very reluctant to go to the police. That's the reality, whether we like it or we don't. So what, again, what I'm told by the experts is that if you, if the policy only says to an employee, go to the police, then a lot of people won't do it. And so.
But if they have to.
Let me, let me finish. And so sexual abuse, physical abuse, any kind of abuse will not get reported because people are afraid. And if you think about it for a moment, because it is the nature of people who abuse children, that they tend to be highly credible people in the community. That's how they get to do these crimes. If you accuse that person, then most people are very worried about their own liability. And so they will tend not to do it. So you've got to create a procedure that makes it safe and liability free for the employee, or you don't have a policy that's worth the paper it's written on because they won't follow it. I mean, does anybody in this day and age not understand that if you think a child is a victim of sexual abuse, that you shouldn't call the police? Of course you should. Everyone knows that. Does it happen? Rarely. And that's the reason. So what we've created here is a policy where you go to a safe official, a cutout, the HR director, your department head, and you report it. They then have the responsibility to take it to the police, but they're protected by the town's liability insurance where somebody else may or may not be. So we've created a situation where there's some safety here, a cutout, literally called a cutout, that's what it's called, between the reporter who suspects the abuse and the police department who has to take the legal action on it. This is a very specific construct. It is not an accident. And I, and I am not an expert at this. And if you want experts here, then I would bring them back for you on a different night and they could tell you far more about this than I can. I only know what I've been told secondhand, if you will. Unfortunately, the HR director's on vacation, couldn't be here tonight. We needed to get this scheduled. I know it was very high priority for the board, so we put it on. But I don't know enough about this nearly to be able to guide you through involved questions about it. I can tell you certain things, but that's not as much as you might like.
Jim, should we take it under advisement and do exactly what Kevin just said? Because that's what I would like to do is after reading. I know Lorraine's worked hard on this and getting this to, to town and, and I really, you know what?
Well, the, the first question I asked is where it came from. I mean, that's what I wrote. Who prepared this? If, if it's a boilerplate from something, you know, the, the need or the direction was to let's address the sexual abuse reporting policy and not to find sexual abuse anywhere in this other than one line that's below malnutrition from birth and.
It gives, it's under the indicator section, Jim, on page, it's section two point one B, two point one C. Sorry, then. It's, there are behavioral, there are behavioral indicators that they identify.
If you see that the child is withdrawn, aggressive.
Child abuse reporting policy.
Overly compliant, child has bizarre sophisticated or unusual sexual behavior or knowledge, child, child is sexually provocative, child has poor peer relationships, overly adaptive, child is inappropriately adult, is inappropriately adult or inappropriately infantile.
Yeah.
That is a definition of behavioral indicators of what?
Of sexual abuse.
Sexual abuse.
No, not according to this.
Yeah.
Where, does it say anything about sexual abuse?
Abuse and neglect.
It says abuse. It doesn't say sexual. I think Jim's looking for the word, sexual abuse. Twenty-one.
Abuse, abuse by definition includes the commission of a sexual offense against a child. So if you keep that in mind as you're going through all abuse situations that we would want to bring forward, some of the signs that there has been sexual abuse come under this category of behavioral indicators. I mean, one thing, when I read through this, one thing I was, right away went to is the importance of training for all employees to have more explicit information on, you know, the, these types of behaviors so that they can actually be prepared for what they would be seeing and see examples through training. You know, there are video training modules that you can provide to employees.
We've already done some training with all, all town employees have taken the Darkness to Light program. There aren't very many communities, in fact, there may be none other than us where that's actually happened. But in, in terms of doing more training, we have to have the policy in place in order to train them on the policy because that's the next step.
The policy needs to be very specific. And I think that, you know, that there's a couple of towns out there that are dealing with the same situation that, that we are in. I know that you asked me to work on this, but Kevin and the HR director had, you know, Kevin told me at the last meeting that they've got it down pat and it would be in our next packet. So I didn't get a chance, I don't know if Lorraine got a chance to sit with Kevin, but I didn't. And when I was reading through it, you know, when I, when I read a statement of, you know, the staff is not required to report cases to the law.
I'm sorry, where's that?
I don't know what page it is. It's three point one.
Staff is not required to report cases of abuse neglect to the police law enforcement officials.
You see, if you're required to report.
So what's the question?
Well, when I just, when I read that, you know, it just, it flashes a big light, like you don't have to. And this is exactly what we need to get away from. We have to, we have to state what we mean and mean what we say. And that is, if you see something, you know, you need to report it. And, and.
Again, again, I'm not an expert.
And I didn't write this, Lorraine. You, you know, I know this is mostly, mostly I get. So.
Procedurely.
I am really happy to see other people, the hugs program is doing something to, to, to present to the town the sexual violence prevention at every age and stage. That's happening on May eighth at the Ahorn Middle School. I think that's, you know, that's a really good start and I, you know, I hope to see more of this kind of stuff, but.
This, this came out of, this came out of through Chief O'Leary. This came out of our whole effort to create a program. But again, and again, I'm, I'm not an expert and I really wish.
So did you, I thought that you spoke with the experts though?
I, my, the experts that I spoke to, Ed O'Leary.
Yeah.
Vicki, our, COA director slash social services director, and Cindy DePina. And those folks talked to other folks. No, I don't know exactly who they talked to. I didn't personally write this. This is just time limits and what I can physically do as one person, so.
Right. And I was more than willing to like, you know, I would have taken some off your desk, whatever I need to do. But, you know, it seemed you were all set with it from, you know, what I had given you from the state and what Lorraine had given you. So, you know, but.
What you gave me from the state was the first responder reporting law, which we're very well aware of. There's. There's.
Right. And I'm, I'm not saying that I get, I just, you know, I was there to help, you know. And now, you know, you talk about not enough time, Kevin. I have about, like, you know, depending. I have, um, you know, two weeks. So this is something that's important to me that I, you know, I would, you know, I think, you know, like to firm up.
Okay.
Well, if, if.
No, I guess I'm just.
This has gone through a lot of hands who have a lot of expertise.
A lot of expertise, yeah. Then if that's the way that these experts do things, that's, you know.
Well, it, there's a reason they do it. I just said it. You can put a policy in place and you can tell the employees all day long, you will do this. But because there is no way to check if they're doing it or not, you can't enforce it. I mean, you can say to the employees, any case of suspected sexual abuse or any other form of child neglect or abuse, you will report it to the police. And guess what? They won't. That's the reality.
That's what happened.
So if you have a policy that says that, you don't have a policy that's worth the paper it's written on. Now, this is what I'm told. If you have a policy that gives the employee a place to report this where they can protect themselves from the liability of being the accuser of people who carry great status typically in a community, that's how these predators do what they do. Then you have a policy where you are likely to get a high compliance rate with employees who know things and will make the report. You've got to give them some safety. So, again, if it was, everybody knows these days that if there's a child being abused, you should call the police. I'd call the police. You'd probably call the police. But not everybody is going to do what you and I do. Is, is this a revelation? Don't every, doesn't everybody understand that a lot of people know about abuse and don't report it? We all know that. And so what this policy is designed to do is to get through that reality and create an opportunity for people to report this in a safe way. Now, if you fail to provide that opportunity, folks, then you got a feel-good policy. We can all give ourselves a pat on the back because we think we've got something good, i.e. everybody will report to the police. And you don't. So do you want real progress or do you just want something on a piece of paper that makes us all feel like we did something?
You know, I'm going to end it right here because I'm going to about, to blow my top right now. We need an expert. Kevin, you've said you're not an expert. You tried to pass this along and you're saying, here it is, our HR person's on vacation. I'm not an expert, but you guys figure it out. I can't figure it out and neither can anyone on this board. I'm going to call in an expert. We're going to talk about it and we're going to get something that is worth its piece of paper.
Something that's a meat on.
Because, you know, this is a feel-good thing and this is not what we're looking for. We are not looking for someone to pat ourselves on the back and say, we've got burns, we've got lacerations, we've got malnutrition, and here's a 48 hour hotline with an 800 number. This is useless to me. This is not what we set out to do. And it's not going to be a checkbox on, on something. If we're going in the wrong direction and we've asked Kevin to do something that he's either not qualified to do or it's out of reach because we're asking for the wrong thing, then shame on us. But I don't know that, Kevin doesn't know that, certainly our HR person. You know, I'm not even going to get going with that. This was a priority. It was set to get done by this month. The draft is nowhere near what we hoped for and I'm not sure why. We're not getting it back. But I say we table it and we get somebody in here that knows specific, because this is a specific specialty item that is not being addressed in towns at all that I'm seeing.
Can I make a suggestion that it be worked through Chief O'Leary because of the reporting process?
Sounds like it was. Sounds like it was.
The Chief O'Leary did this and.
That's what Kevin said.
And Vicki, and Vicki did it, and Kevin did it, and our HR person, and everyone collaborated because that's the best and brightest that we have. And this is what we get out. We made a mistake by going in-house and we need an expert.
I, I certainly don't have any objection at all. In fact, my preference is to get somebody from the outside to write a policy.
Let's get somebody from the outside that's, that's qualified. And I'm not saying you're not because you're a town manager. This is an expert piece of work that we're looking for and it's not from any town manager, not.
Jim, I, I said over and over, I'm not an expert on this. I rely on other people who do have expertise. But in terms of having somebody write this, is it the board's expectation that we would hire a consultant perhaps to do this? Is that what she had in mind? Because that has never been mentioned.
We, we might not know what we need.
Well, I, I think what we do know at this point is the staff did the best job they could with what we thought was a good draft and, you know, and that, that includes a great deal of contact that those staff folks have with other people. Again, we can't find a town that's got one of these. We can't find one. There's probably one out there somewhere, but we haven't been able to find it yet. If the board wishes, I certainly would be happy to hire a consultant. I'm sure there's somebody out there who will do it and have, have the consultant meet with the board to get a clear understanding of what the board would like and then pay for a policy to be prepared. More than happy to do that. But that's not what you asked for initially and I had perhaps an unclear understanding of what it is you had in mind.
I, I think what we asked for was to come up with a sexual abuse reporting policy. That was very clear. What we got back was a child abuse reporting policy that has everything else, in my opinion, except what we asked for. It's, it's, it's in here watered down with everything else, but it doesn't have the emphasis that at least I thought it needed to have. And, and again, I'm not coming down on, you know, there's town managers, there's an HR, this is a specialty item. And if we can't, you know, you, you shouldn't be in a position to know everything about everything, but this is a specialty item and I don't think we have the expertise. And certainly with our HR person here, there's a void right now because that's, HR is something that would focus on this a little bit more closely than a town manager.
Well, this, this really goes outside of the expertise of any staff person. I would say Chief O'Leary is probably the most knowledgeable, but I think Ed is the most knowledgeable in terms of the crime as opposed to how to write a policy for employees. It really is remarkable that we weren't able to find a policy more on point with some of the city and town. But I think that says something too. I'm not exactly sure what it says, but we literally can't find anyone that has one. Now, it's with the Mass Municipal Personnel Association, the Town Managers Association, Police Chiefs Association, and I think Vicki reached out to the Social, um, Social Service slash Council on Aging Association. So that, if that doesn't touch every city and town in the state, it certainly got the bulk of them. And nobody had one. So I think what we're doing here is we're creating something that may not exist at this point. And, and we certainly would be happy to do that. That's not the sense of what the mission was that I thought she had communicated to me. And one other point, please understand, the staff did the best job we could. We care about this too, deeply. And so if we've come up short, please don't feel like it's through any lack of effort or any lack of caring. We care about this just as much as you do, trust me. So I apologize if we came up short, but we will go higher. I will find an expert. We will hire that person. I'll find some money in the budget. Randy will find some money in the budget. And we will pay them to develop this policy and we'll do it just as fast as we can do it for you.
We have, um, right down the street, we have the, the building that the Norfolk County DA, the Child's Advocate. I mean, isn't this something that we can run by them so we wouldn't have, as a state, I mean, they're, they're a governmental agency so that we don't have to have, pay for consultant, but, but run this by them. This is a draft. This is not anything that.
Yeah, I don't know if it was run by them or not. I'd have to ask the chief.
I'd like this, maybe that might be the first stop, is we run it, run it by them.
It's a great idea.
Jim, can I say something? Please?
Does the board want to detain people from outside of the board to talk about this? If you could just use the microphone.
I will.
I don't know what I missed between jumping out of bed and getting my clothes on and getting here, but, um, something's not right. Okay? There's been a long period of time that this has come before the board. And having worked for 10 years in social services and having dealt with and not having, formal education, I guess, that says that I can detect sexual abuse in children. I knew it. I felt it. I knew it. And I brought it to my supervisors and I worked for 10 years for Pine Street Inn in a women and children's program. You don't need to have a PhD, Kevin. I'm sorry. You don't have to have a doctorate in social services to know when a child has been abused. There are indications that you can see and you formulate. So I understand that people are afraid to come forward and state that because they're afraid of the repercussions against them. But what I heard before I jumped out of bed was inappropriate and it was inadequate for the town. I don't know, I don't know what Lorraine gave, but I know that there's a lot of information out there. And so somebody didn't do their homework. And I am appalled to think that we're at this point right now facing all the allegations with the Sheen situation, that this is what we're, this is all we could come up with? Give me a break. Give me a break.
All right, let's, let's do this and.
I just want to, please, Jim, just let me finish because I, I, I ran and got dressed to come up here. This is not adequate for what the town is going through right now. And obviously, it has been a skim. It has just, it has just skimmed the top of the topic. There is a lot of information out there. And I will make sure that you have it. I will make sure the HR director has it. And anybody on this board will have it. I will contact Pine Street Inn tomorrow and I will make sure you have the information by Friday.
Ms. Chairman, I appreciate that, Debbie. I truly do. But I'm not sure if I get that information that it's going to make me an expert in the subject. In fact, I'm quite certain it isn't. What we need is a subject matter expert, someone who truly understands this. You know, there are communities that have gone through this. There's communities right nearby. They don't have a policy. And they've had town employees who are in prison now, in two cases that I know of because I was personally involved in reporting one of them. But that town doesn't have a policy. And I had a town employee that was a predator.
Then why are we not there yet, Kevin?
Let me finish. I don't know why those, why these communities don't have it. I don't know why there's a complete vacuum here of communities with a policy. I can tell you that this represents more than any other town has that we know of. If we've come up short, again, my apologies to you. We didn't skim it. We did a lot of work. Been working on this for three months. If we didn't get it on point to what you want, then we will work harder at it. But the board hasn't, other than just saying that you want a sexual abuse, child sexual abuse reporting policy, you haven't given me much direction other than those words.
You didn't give me a chance, Kevin. You really didn't. I mean, I'm not going to get, I'm not getting what I'm.
Guys, I'm going to end this right now because it's.
I think we should take a break.
Thank you for coming down tonight.
Before we go any further.
As I said before, Kevin is not the right person because he's not trained in it.
Jim, I'm going to tell you right now. I'm just going to tell you one thing right now. I am not going to let this stop.
That's fine.
I am going farther than this. If I have to go to the papers, I'm going farther than this because you've had an opportunity to, to investigate every single solitary lead that you possibly could have to get the information. And once again, we are falling short.
Why am I being attacked? I don't understand. Why am I being attacked, Mr. Chairman?
You're not being attacked, Kevin. I'm telling the truth.
Jesus. Debbie, Debbie. I don't care about this? Are you kidding me? I care about this as much as anybody else did.
Let me set the record straight. Kevin has been working with us since day one that this came out.
Anybody else report an abuser to the police? Anyone else here? I did.
I have to, Kevin, and I'm not going to wave the flag. I'm going to end this right now.
All right.
Okay? Kevin's been working with the police. The police are wrapping up their investigation. This is probably one of the most emotional issues that has come through the town. And it's the tip of the iceberg or it's over. I don't know. The police are finishing up their stuff. What we asked for was a sexual abuse reporting policy. What we got back, I don't think addresses it. I think the reason it doesn't address it because it's a, it's a specialty item these days that we've learned from generations of crap that's been going on. And it's come to the point now where it's, it's in our town and I want it done right. I don't want to ask Kevin because he's not qualified as a sexual abuse reporting policy expert. Our HR person is not an expert. We need to find someone in here that can tell us from their day-to-day operations. It's not an office employee handbook. It's not a Mass Municipal Association because those are the same groups that have let it go on for 10, 20, 30 years. So I'm not going to go back to the, to, to the, uh, the same group that's letting it happen. I'm going to have somebody come in here that's an expert on it and they can tell us. I don't want to, I don't want to say Kevin's not doing his job because Kevin has gone to every meeting that we've had with the police and we're waiting for the police to come back with the report. Kevin took a, a direction from us to put something together and he's at the position where he doesn't have an expertise in it. And, and we asked him to do something that he just doesn't have that expertise. So if everyone can calm down a little bit, we'll put it back on the agenda once we've reached out to get an expert that can help us because we need to help ourselves right now. And none of us at this table are qualified.
Jim, can I just ask, I just want to ask that as part of when the expert is identified, that when they develop this policy, that they still include to some extent all forms of abuse? Because I think the idea was to model, as I understood, was to model this after, you know, we have mandated reporters as employees of, of the town. And so I think the hope was to have all municipal employees educated and aware so that any type of abuse could be addressed. So, you know, certainly it's the sexual abuse is the one that's at the forefront, but I think all forms of abuse are important to educate our employees on. So I just want to make sure that that is still included as we give direction to whoever the consultant is. Thanks.
And I think that's, that's a valid point. And let's have, that can be a direction, but let's hear back from the consultant what they have to say.
The education is the critical piece. That's the critical piece.
And the one thing I want to say is it needs to be mandated, mandatory, you have to report it whether you're in fear of losing your position with the town or, or we're employees of the town legally. On the board, as a SAW, coach, whatever, you know what? It needs to be mandatory or you're held liable because that's how this got pushed down the road. And we're not going to stand for it. All right, so.
All right. We've got the town managers review and in fairness, let's take five minutes so we can all clear our heads.
Yeah, good idea.
Come out fresh, so. Foxport Cable Access, can we have five minutes and we'll come back at 9:20? Thank you all. Thank you, everybody. Good evening again. Finishing up the Board of Selectmen's meeting. There's a couple action items that we can go through quickly before we get into the last items. Item number two, enter office, the minutes from March 26th, Board of Selectmen meeting.
I just had one correction, I think. March 26th, on page two, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down. I don't think I had asked about the overlay surplus. I wasn't sure if that was Ginny or Linda. Did I? On the overlay surplus?
I know I didn't. Did you ask that?
Do you remember that, Linda? I, I made a note. I thought it was Linda.
I had asked about.
What page you want, Lorraine?
Page two.
No, I had asked about free cash to explain to the audience where the free cash came from. I don't know who asked about the overlay surplus.
I thought you did. I didn't. It wasn't me.
Yeah, I know I didn't because I knew what it was. Well, I knew what free cash was too, but I just had done it so that folks at home could have a better understanding.
Okay. Well, we'll leave it. You can say it was a question. There was a question on what the overlays.
Yeah, okay. Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, just say there was a question and take Lorraine's name off of it because we don't know who asked it. I'm going to approve.
One other quick comment on, on page one, the second paragraph from the bottom where it says the April 2nd, we'll have TIF warned, uh, TIF warned articles, Town Manager Evaluation. It should be Town Manager Self-Evaluation. We broke it up this year.
I move to approve as amended, um, March twenty-sixth minutes.
Second?
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? All right, motion carries five zero. Next item was the resignation of Amanda Smith and Deborah Flattery from the Historical Commission. An email in there for that. And one was actually, she resigned in two thousand and ten. And the other one was in October two thousand and twelve, so these are sound, these, it sounds like they're just catching up.
Yeah. I move to accept their resignations of Amanda Smith and Deborah Flattery with gratitude, time served.
Second?
Motion made, seconded, further discussion on the resignations? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And the last one, Tom Clark, Bob, Bob Cutler had given us a information on appointments of additional election workers with terms expiring August thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. And this is for the election, I guess, starting on April thirtieth. Danielle Jakes, Beverly Lord, Robert Vondenbrink, Shirley Mather, Lauren Barnes, John Martin, Catherine Apgar, Kelly Marv, Marvis, Jane Regan, Stephen Marvis, and Carmela Julius.
So moved.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. We'll make one motion for everybody, further discussion, all eleven.
It's a fine group of people. We thank them, we thank them very much for volunteering to help on Election Day.
With gratitude, all those in favor?
All right.
Motion carries five zero. That's it for our action items. The next item that we have on is Selectmen Annual Review of the Town Manager. If you recall last year when I did the Town Manager Review, we did it a little differently this year. Part of Kevin's contract is he, he is required to be a performance review and has to be public at this table. So, on April second, we asked Kevin to do his self-review and he presented it and then handed it to us in writing. From that point, if you wanted to meet with Kevin one-on-one, you'd, you'd go back and forth with Kevin between April second and today. I had asked the board to take their review, there's eight review criteria that we evaluate Kevin with and that's part of his written contract. Take those review comments, give it to Lorraine, she would compile them. You were given an opportunity to give narration and then a score of one through five. And then Lorraine was going to put those together. And I had asked Lorraine, it's a little different this year because Linda and I are up for election and I didn't wanna take the responsibility of summarizing everybody's thoughts. So, I had asked Lorraine to give a summary in her words of all those eight items collectively from all of us and go through all eight items one at a time in her words, just so we're not hearing forty different paragraphs, we're hearing just eight. So, Lorraine did that, she handed it out to the board. There's a scoring from each category and it's tallied up to, at the bottom. And that score comes with, I think, just what the, what the categories are. It's a, it's a rating between one and five. One being unacceptable, two being conditional, requires improvement, three being satisfactory, meets selectmen's expectations, four exceptional, general exceeds selectmen's expectations. And a, a, a score of five is outstanding, substantially, substantially exceeds selectmen's expectations. This will be the third review that we've given Kevin, it's part of his record, it's part of the town's record. And then per contract, June, June of two thousand and thirteen is when we have to move into the fourth year and the board is gonna meet to talk about, is this something that we wanna do? Extend Kevin's contract for another duration. If we take no action, it automatically gets extend, extended. So, this is something that we're gonna talk about in May. But this closes his contractual obligation for the two thousand and thirteen on the third. So, at that, I guess I'll turn it over to Lorraine.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Respectfully, would, is it appropriate for the public to have a copy of that?
There's an extra copy right here.
It is there, thank you so much. Apologies for the, for the interruption.
No problem.
And that's good. What is public record is.
Yes, all three.
That's one packet.
Obviously, Kevin's, uh, Town Manager's contract is a public record. All our individual reviews are public record and anything that we're gonna speak at the table present as public record.
Thank you.
Okay, so, every member of the board provided me with either written or typed comments which accompanied each of the sections that Kevin was evaluated on. What I did was take all of the written comments and consolidate them under each category so one of the documents in front of you lists by section with the score, verbatim what everyone's comments were, and compiles them all. So, what I'm going to do is read through the summary, the description of each topic that was, Kevin was evaluated on. And I'll read verbatim some of the comments just to enhance, you know, my summary comment. So, starting with supervision. The criteria that Kevin was evaluated on is, does the town manager adequately supervise department heads, appropriately delegate, promote competency of staff, ensure collaboration and efficiency, hold people accountable, manage conflicts, et cetera. Supervision of employees has improved over the past years. Kevin has directed department heads to attend management training as part of corrective action plans and performance improvement. He should handle personnel issues in a more timely fashion and communicate potential personnel issues in a less threatening manner. I'm just gonna read some of the specific comments that I've summarized. For example, the hiring of the new HR director should take some of the discipline issues off of his plate. Good to see that each department head has taken an active role in the goals and objectives process. Threats to the Board of Selectmen of the unionizing of non-union employees because of a situation is not what could be called good supervision skills. Kevin has addressed performance issues, including separation of two employees. Timeliness of addressing personnel issues can improve. So, these are just some of the examples, verbatim what was provided that resulted in the summary that I've written, okay? Under the category of leadership. Does the town manager inspire and/or effectively influence others, act decisively, adaptable, have effective interpersonal skills, demonstrate a high regard for personal ethics, offer practical innovative ideas? Does he have the courage to deliver bad news when needed? Kevin has demonstrated innovative thinking in his proposal for merit-based review process for employees. He needs to complete the necessary steps for review and approval of the final program and an implementation plan by the Board of Selectmen. The process should not be rushed. He is a strong negotiator with good interpersonal skills for bargaining and has bargained for items that will improve the financial viability of the town. Kevin has demonstrated highly effective leadership during times of crisis. Kevin has used hyperbole as a tactic to influence the Board of Selectmen. Attempting to use scare tactics does not help the board with decision-making. Just some specific comments. We have taken steps to replace the automatic step and provide merit-based review process for employees. The success of the system was to have a robust process of new documentation and review. Merit plan is still in development. There are times that Kevin becomes an advocate for issues. I give him great praise for leadership during times of crisis, especially during the storms we've had. I'm concerned about the two-step pay plan that set up the evaluation process was implemented before the program was completed. Under execution of policy. Does the town manager understand the bylaws and ordinances of the town and cause them to be fairly enforced? The experience and training of the town manager with respect to municipal law is, as is expected, and appreciated. Kevin should focus on quoting policy slash law correctly during public presentations to support effective Board of Selectmen decision-making. Kevin has many years of experience in the laws and ordinances of the town. Although there have been instances where he has made statements directing, that may not have given the total picture, is an example of, of one of the comments. Kevin attends meaningful continuing education programs, focuses on innovation. It's another comment for that. Under community relations. Does the town manager work well with citizens to properly handle their issues or complaints? Is he readily available to the public? Does he address their issues timely? Does he take the time to understand the political ramifications of issues? Kevin has made himself available to the public with drop-in hours and meetings at the senior center. Kevin should take more time to understand the political ramifications of issues like the electronic sign proposal for the common. Kevin should more consistently respond to all citizen contacts. Outreach to the community was excellent during storms. Under economic development. The criteria is, does the town manager work well with developers while protecting the town's interests? Does he work to increase the town's tax base through economic development or other revenue suggestions? Kevin has worked positively on issues such as sewer, billboards, and communicating with the craft organization. He successfully worked with the TIF team to negotiate an agreement with Inves, InvenSys. His recent proposal for an economic development initiative is a good first step for business prospecting. Development of the IMA finance proposal was an important accomplishment. Kevin should be careful to work with input from planning, water, and sewer and Board of Selectmen when considering business partnering with developers with poor track records. Effective communication of business development plans to Board of Selectmen should be implemented. I would like to hear updates from Kevin directly when discussions, meaning discussions about economic development, when these discussions take place, so as to keep the board in the loop and offer their opinions. Economic development is a topic that is less affected by a town manager and Board of Selectmen as much as it is with economic factors and efforts through the various planning and zoning boards. However, the best foot forward has been taken by town manager coming off the volatility of this board with the casino issue and that is appreciated. Larger issues in front of the community relating to development such as sewer, billboards, communicating with craft organization have been as positive as can be expected. The town manager has juggled through these with some successes and some failures along the way and that is expected. Alignment with the Board of Selectmen. How well does the town manager function under the policy direction of the Board of Selectmen? Does he communicate often enough in appropriate detail in advance of us reading things in the newspaper? Is he open to new ideas? Does he return phone calls and emails on a timely basis? Does he meet with us individually as needed? Time, communication, and addressing various opinions on the board are satisfactory. Alignment with five independent elected officials is difficult, but overall is fine. Kevin can improve in this area by taking time to learn more background on issues that are potentially controversial. Pre-meeting packets should include complete information so that Board of Selectmen members are fully prepared for discussion. Kevin should avoid shooting from the hip with answers. Board of Selectmen members should be informed of information that will appear in the papers. Financial management. How well was the budget prepared? Did it include innovative ideas? Was input sought from all applicable sources? Were budget presentations easily understood? How well does the town adhere to the budget? Is the Board of Selectmen updated regularly on the monthly financial results? Does he listen to the advice of the board? This category is a driving factor in performance. Kevin's, along with our finance director's efforts to bring stable numbers forward, are appreciated. Budget forecasts, money on hand, and capitalization of past and current projects are well done. Performance was outstanding with savings made through the insurance loss control program, developing the IMA finance program, significantly decreasing health insurance costs through plan redesign were important accomplishments. Improvements in monthly reporting of financial results, including specific impacts related to changes, for example, such as the consolidation of the DPW, would also be helpful to the Board of Selectmen. For execution of tasks. Execution of tasks. How has the town manager executed against his established goals and objectives? Be specific as to where he has exceeded or has areas to improve. Despite a heavy task load and tight time schedules, Kevin managed to keep making progress on goals and objectives. Some were more successful than others. Most notable in InvenSys TIF, identifying the finance plan for the IMA, streamlining services, health plan redesign, and a finance plan for town hall renovation and replacement. Kevin is very busy and should delegate, and should work to delegate certain tasks in order to be more responsive to requests by the Board of Selectmen for information or analysis. I'm not chiming in with any additional comments because it seems like, I think I've cap, captured it. But if you feel that I've left anything out, please jump in, okay? Okay, so, the town manager's finest, finest accomplishments. Working with finance to bring forward balanced budgets during economic instability for a third year in a row. Understanding the important InvenSys TIF request immediately and directing a process for evaluation and settlement. Coordination and communication during storm and power outage disasters. Significantly reduced healthcare costs, developed finance program for the IMA, strong negotiation skills. Town manager's three strongest points. Ability to juggle numerous tasks, financial management slash innovation, innovation, strong negotiator with unions and businesses. Three areas for improvement. Work towards a better understanding of Foxborough's sense of community, history of topics, and acknowledgement of local efforts. Consolidating presentations, ensuring consistently detailed and accurate information is presented to all boards, committees, and the public. Continue to improve visibility at town hall. Now, on, on the last page, I've listed the scores for each of the categories. Supervision, the score was thirteen. Leadership, fifteen point five. Execution of policy, fifteen. Community relations, fourteen. Economic development, fifteen. Alignment with Board of Selectmen, eleven. Financial management, sixteen. And execution of tasks, sixteen. Total and averaged to compare to the, the evaluation criteria. One average comes out to two point nine. So, bringing that to the closest criteria would make that three point oh, which is a satisfactory rating overall. Meets selectmen's expectations. And then we have a section here for town manager comments and then for a signature by a representative of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Is there anyone on the board that had comments that are so overwhelming then from the summary that you wanted to speak about them? Everyone feel it was a pretty, I think it was very well done. Representative of the comments that you have with the understanding, I mean, there's five members. Some have issues that are vocal and the other ones don't.
Well, Lorraine did great.
Kevin, you did your self-review. And I, I can't imagine sitting on a public table, listening to a, a public review in front of everybody. But an opportunity to either dispute this or argue or reinforce or have an opportunity to talk about it, you don't have to.
Well, I appreciate all the board's work. I think everybody did put a lot of time in. Lot of good commentary here. I continue to be somewhat perplexed by what appears to me to be a ever-changing standard for my performance. The, my contract requires the board to look at the goals and objectives, which were set up. And I gave you a report on that and I think it's fair to say that the vast majority of those goals and objectives were completed. Save one, which was the creation of a central maintenance department, which just, there just, is not a consensus and that's gonna have to go to another year. But many of the con- But many of the comments that are offered, actually, the vast majority of the comments that are offered have very little to do with the goals and objectives. Now, last year, I made that observation to the board, and what we agreed was that we would take each of the areas, of the eight areas that the board had identified, supervision, leadership, et cetera, and we would set up goals in each of those areas. And the board, the challenge for the board, and for me, was to translate from the commentary goals, which if I accomplished those, would correct deficiencies. That's always what an employee wants. As I read the comments, I frankly find very little that talks about those goals in each of the sections, but I find a lot of subjective commentary, which it's hard for an employee to accomplish what an employer wants when the employee doesn't know what it is the employer wants. Now, the written goals is a statement by the board, and it says, here's what you want me to do. But I think the board continues to have some difficulty evaluating my performance according to the goals, and instead enters a lot of subjective commentary. Some of this, I frankly don't know what it means, and so I don't know how to do these things better. And other things are, I have to say honestly, I don't think are fair. So, for instance, I think a five is an indication of meets the board's expectation.
No, a five is outstanding, substantially exceeds our expectations.
Three, three is doing a good job.
The town of Foxborough has a composite rate increase with respect to employee health insurance over four years, which I think is a negative number. We're still putting this, the coming year together. I'm not sure what your expectation is with respect to employee health insurance. Pretty much everybody else is having, continuing to have substantial rate increases. Certainly, two zeros and a negative number, and a three, I would submit to you is extraordinary. And yet, no one on the board found that extraordinary. We are one of thirteen, for the current fiscal year, we are one of thirteen towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts which did not find it necessary to levy the entire Prop. Two and a Half allowed tax levy. As you know, we took half of the levy and used it to reduce a tax incentive bond, thus saving the taxpayers their proportionate share of $400,000. Thirteen towns in the Commonwealth out of 351, but nobody finds that extraordinary. So, we just received a major award from MIA, Mass. and Local Insurance Association, for being the leader in the area of loss insurance, property liability, automobile, insurance cost containment. That's that loss control program that we set up. And while the board made favorable comments on it, we were the best. But again, some board members felt that the performance in that area just met expectations. Others of you said four, no one said five. It's unclear to me, given those accomplishments, that, and I reported those to you, I basically said all that, but there doesn't appear to be favorable recognition of those accomplishments, or perhaps, perhaps in board members' minds, that is just acceptable. That is what should be happening. I would submit to you that those accomplishments are not what should be hap- those are extraordinary as measured by very objective criteria, i.e. what the rest of the state is doing. So, that's sort of a quick reaction. I guess in fairness, you know, I'm disappointed. This one standard where, I think the composite is a two point two, with only one board member reporting satisfactory performance, the area of six, which is alignment with the board. I note that on the goals and objectives, in the area of alignment with the board, there is not a single goal or objective. There's not one.
There was not, I'm sorry, not a single one?
In the area of the goals and objectives, this one that I have back, the composite one that Lorraine did, where did that go? Item six. Alignment with the board of selectmen. It defines sort of very, in very frankly vague terms, what it is. Proper attendance, office, board, and committee meetings, et cetera. Include all pertinent information, board of selectmen packets, keep board with any new legislation that could impact Foxborough. There's no specific goal in here, unless those are the goals, I'm not sure. So, I'm confused what it is that you want me to do to be better aligned with you, so...
I guess, I guess Kevin, the, you know, when you look at the definitions under each section, you know, see the highlighted area under, for example, number six. Alignment with the board of selectmen. Item number six. How well does the town manager function under the policy direction of the board of selectmen? Does he communicate often enough in appropriate detail in advance of us reading things in the newspaper? That was the same definition that we had last year. So, you know, I think it spells out what the expectation would be. The examples given underneath are, you know, some examples, but I think the idea is to, you know, hear feedback from the members as to how your performance is viewed, related to that definition of alignment, you know, as that defines alignment of the board of selectmen. So, I mean, when I look at the comments specifically, you know, there are comments that do address the importance of the loss reduction program, the success of that, the development of the, you know, really good in the financial area, execution of tasks, which is these goals and objectives being executed. I'm not sure how to write a goal, like these examples underneath number six, which is really the intangible performance aspect, is what I think we're struggling with here. And so, I think it appears to have crept into many of the categories, some aspects of the alignment with the board of selectmen, so I think maybe that's, I'm hearing you say that that's what you're finding disappointing?
That's exactly what I'm, that's exactly what I'm saying, because as I look at some of the categories and what's been accomplished in the goals, and then I read the comments that have been made, I find a lot of the comments are completely unrelated to the goals. And so, I'm sort of wondering, well, if I'm supposed to be accomplishing these goals in a given section, but I receive these comments from individual board members and then a very low rating to go along with it, you know, I'm really left at a loss about what it is you, you want me to achieve. You know, I'm looking at a line with board of selectmen at a one from, from one board member, and then some specific examples about, well, I don't want to get into specifics like that because that's not going to be productive, but I think as an overall comment, it is exceptionally difficult to work for five different people. That's the career I chose, and so I'm not whining about it. I'm just making the observation. That is exceptionally difficult to do. Now, the way that town managers try to bring some sense to that is to say to the board, give me some written guidance that indicates what it is you want me to accomplish. And if there's, if there's a problem that we need to, we'll give you an example. Last year, the board said that I wasn't accessible enough to the public. And I remember saying back to you, I thought that was a fair criticism, because I knew there were complaints about being able to come see me. This year, the staff and I concentrated on that area, such that no citizen of this town, not once, not a single instance, as a citizen of this town called here, and either gotten a return phone call within 24 hours or an appointment, just as fast as I could get them in here. I can't always accommodate their schedule and my schedule. Somebody wants to meet with me, but they have a job, so they can only meet at night. And so, sometimes it takes a little bit of time. But there hasn't been a single instance where any citizen has been turned away, not one. But there's criticism in here that would suggest to me that that continues to be a problem. There's nothing specific. It just says that people continue to complain they can't get in to see me. Honestly, folks, I don't know who that is. I mean, my instructions of the staff are, if somebody wants to see me, they come see me. When I'm not in a meeting, which is three quarters of my day, honestly, you know, the instruction is, fit them in, fit the person in. If they'd like to come in, I have people knock on the door all the time, and I say, come on in, and you know, if I'm in a meeting. So, I don't know what it is that the expectation is.
I think it might be helpful if you sat as follow-up to this, and I'd ask the board if you want to consider this as an option, you know, if you would spend time one-on-one to review the specific concerns that you have now that we have the comments typed up, and you know, if there are, you know, certain comments that you want further explanation to be able to understand where it's coming from, I think that's important, you know, that we would clarify that for Kevin. So, you know, I'd suggest we consider a one-on-one. In case there are any, you know, specific comments, they're identified by the individual, so you know, you know who they are attributed to, and you know, that way to see, is there something that perhaps, you know, was missed?
With all respect, I don't think one-on-one is going to do it, because you're five folks with strong feelings about things, and that's, you don't run for office if you're not a strong-willed person, and you have five different perspectives on what you want accomplished and how you want it accomplished. And so, as you look at some of these, you can see some very dramatic differences between you on the very same performance. You all looked at the same performance area, and some of you came up with a one or a two, and some of you came up with a four and threes. It's clear that the board itself has some issue with respect to articulating to me what you as a board want do, done. I can't satisfy five individual people. It is physically impossible. But the board continues to hold me accountable to five different standards of five different people. The whole idea of doing the goals was for the board to discipline itself to articulate what you want accomplished as a group of people, albeit some of what you want may not get accomplished. But it's a process of compromise. And then to give me something that says, here's what the group wants, as opposed to five individual people. I mean, if you look at the comments, look at the variation here. No town manager, no matter how gifted he or she is, can satisfy what each of you as individuals wants. It is not possible. I can't do it. Andy couldn't do it. No one can do it. So, I'm trying to understand what it is, not only what you want done, but how you want it done. But every year, we go through this process, and the identical problem occurs, which is, it continues to be five different standards, not a singular standard. And so, I, as the person trying to carry this out for you, really end up every year being somewhat dismayed. I mean, here I am thinking, gee, you know, this past, remember, the year we're talking about is July one of last year to today, or last week. So, here I am thinking, boy, that was a good year, and, but the, but the record reflects adequate performance. So, I guess where my confusion is, is in not having clarity with respect to what it is this board expects. And so, that's kind of my quick reaction.
Let me give it a, I'll try to, I don't want to get into the specifics either.
Yeah.
Last year, we took apart the contract and put it back together on an addendum, and I think your concern was, we have a very spreadsheet-like set of goals and objectives, and there was 40 of them. But yet, last year, we raided you on eight things, finance and community relations and alignment with the board and all that stuff. So, we took all of those goals and objectives and broke them down and put them under those eight categories, okay? Good luck trying to find five people that are going to be all on the same page. It, you know, maybe over in Disney World where, you know, it's a different, but here in New England, we've got elected people, and I'm sure you're used to that. There's no way you're going to please everybody. There's an issue that came up last meeting, somebody's upset. There's, a year ago, someone holds a grudge. Someone from the AdCom has got somebody else's ear from the planning board, from a resident. You look at all those items, for instance, on item two, we've got leadership. Now, we've got one, two, three, four, five different subcategories. Each one has a G, so we've got 30 items, and you went through on your self-review, and you said either completed or non-completed. I think what I did, and I think what we directed the board was to do is, okay, what is leadership? Does the town manager inspire and/or effectively influence others? So, that's the definition, and here are all your items below it. So, you go through those. You can't address every single one, create and save budget, conduct overtime, complete, you know, all that stuff. From the year that we've been working with you, we come back and say, leadership. Is he a good leader with all this in the background? And we give you our comments. If we give you a comment on every single item in here, it's just not manageable. So, I think what you got was an honest opinion from each person to say, does Kevin show strong leadership? Here's our honest answer. You go on to the next one, and then collectively, you get an average. I think you're very, you know, maybe it's the system, and I remember we did this right after the casino era. You had one former selectman that had you at the worst, and you had one selectman that had you at the top. They balance each other out, and you get somewhere in the middle. At the end of the day, you know, I don't think it's going to be stroking your ego, because I don't think we can ever get there unless it's super, super work, but you're going to be average, because that is what five people balance out. Now, you know, the finance issue is probably one of your stronger points, and you got the highest rating on that, stronger than the other ones. So, in order for you to get a super, super rating, everybody has to be up there, and we're not all there. And, you know, that's part of the system that was codified in a legal document that we required last year because we had a disagreement in contract. So, that's where we are with it. If you want specific examples on financials, sometimes you get, I'll put it on the table, there was some great budget discussions, and we came above on financial. Some of the things I look at at financial is, how do we get there? We had a fire department set of permit fees that were, I thought, were out of the roof. Sure, we can make a lot of money, but that's not good finance when you start to go in that direction. So, maybe that brought my lower, the score down a little bit, even though we were getting to dollar, how do we get there? You know, last year was, you know, the meals tax. The seniors felt threatened because of the way you got there in the presentations with a dollar issue. So, financial is not just all dollars, so if you get a lower score, there's other things to consider on that. I think we did the best we could, taking those 40 items times, you know, five or six of your responses to each item, put it specifically in a category that we had to do because of the contract, and rated it. So, all of those items have all of the background of all those issues, and at the end of the day, you have five independent people saying, how do we feel about our town manager in this category? And we give it to you in one or two sentences. You know, if you had a board of three people, your scores may deviate a little bit, but I, you know, I... But I, you know, I speak to, you know, different members. You know, Ginny might be very upset about one issue, and it doesn't bother me. When it comes down to putting it on paper, you're going to, you're stuck with the flavor of the day and the topic of the day. And it shouldn't be any surprise, you know, overall, there's feelings, how are you doing? There's specific items that are, that, you know, are the topic of the day. And at the end of the day, we have to put it all in one document, and it's three pages from a year's worth of work. You know, and it's a difficult process to have this discussion in the public. It's difficult for you, and, you know, and I'm sure you can understand there's certain things that we're fired up about. But we don't want to put down on paper, because we don't want to embarrass anyone, we don't have the full story. I don't spend, what I started to write on Lorraine, and I ended up taking it back, because I wasn't quite finished. I don't spend a lot of time in town hall, and I don't do it for a reason. Because we've got to evaluate, and we, I don't want to get personal relationships with people in processes, because I want to be able to objectively look at it from far away. As a result, my ears are in tune to staff complaining, people complaining, you know, you complaining about different board members or different people. We all take it the best we can, and at the end of the day, I spend a lot of time, you know, people focus on it, and we do the best we can. If it's not what you hoped for, you've got the individual, you know, that's why we provided you, each individual has their comments. You know, meet with them during the week. But, you know, we already had the one step, Kevin gave us his best foot forward. We responded, it is what it is. It's this follow-up that you can go back and forth for the, for the next one. But, you know, I don't think we can keep going back and forth for him to find out why we wrote a certain comment, and then to redo it. If that's what we were thinking of going in the direction of, at one point, we got to, we got to draw the line and say it's done. Put it on file, you know, learn from it or grow from it, and then move on to the next one. A little long-winded, but.
No, it's good, but I can pick up on that. And Kevin, when it comes to lines with the board number six, a lot of times we all get along real good up here, a lot of times we don't. When there's something that's become the debate to the board, and you have a tone that is sometimes even, you know, is above what should normally, you should present yourself, the topic to the board, say, this is the information I have, this is it, and let us debate it. A lot of times you could be on that, and you reinstated five or six times during a meeting, and they'll say, well, did I say that word, unionize again? Or, I'm telling you, they're going to do it, they're already talking about it. You're steering the board, and let us take the input that you have, put it on the table, and then we'll have the debate. When you get more involved with the debate, and you get passionate about it, and it's kind of like steering the board. Then it becomes, you know, a bad alliance with the board. It's not working well. To my eyes, your job is to give us all the information we have and let us debate it. It's not to be part of the debate. You've already stated, and sometimes you reinstated five, six times in a meeting, and that's what makes for the anxiety up here sometimes. It's not all you. Sometimes it's directed at you, like tonight. So, it makes it very difficult. I've never had that before. It's, you know, we've got one, now you got two different people, two different, you know, completely different people. But, I, you know, Andy would sit there, explaining to the board what's going on, and the board would have an open debate, which was something, you'd rather get heated between the board than heated with you. Sometimes it's all heated with you, and it's five members heated at you. So I don't even know why you throw yourself out there like that. I would just let it go. Provide the information, let it go, let us take it out on each other. That's the one thing that keeps us from being more improved in alliance with the board in one category, you know? I mean, it's, you know, it's a little easier this year, it's not as difficult as last year, because it's an open process. And like Jimmy says, it gets uncomfortable. But I'm worried easy of it, because we've all learned to know each other. And last year was never an easy year for anything, never mind having that. So, but that's one comment I can make on that. And I think my comments were fair, they were never personal. I think if you look at the average of the boards altogether, you have five people coming up the same score pretty much. You know, and you can get into it if you want, but, you know, I don't know, you know, I can't say I don't know where the one comes from. But you got a three, two-point-five, two-point-five, and a three. Throw the one out, like we do in any series, right? If you take the high-low out, we've got eight, you take out the three and the four, you've got a three on average. In the seven, you take out the four and the two, you got a three-point-three average. You know, and down below is three-point-two. You always, this is what we do in a series, you take out the high and low. So you take out the one, you take out the three, you're at a two-point-five. You know, drop the three again, drop the two, you're at a three. So if you drop the high and the low, it's still the same score. So that way, it always gets rid of the, it gets rid of the worst opinion, it gets rid of the best opinion, it gives you an average opinion. And the average opinion is all three. Which I don't see how you think it's a shameful opinion, it meets expectations. Maybe we're all tough, I don't know. But, you know, we have a response, we all need to be up here to be tough. And it ain't all, it ain't supposed always with you, it's with everybody. We don't take anything lightly up here. It's a good board, it's a fair board, I think everybody works well together. Everybody's got their expertise on certain things, and it shines. And sometimes you need to just step back and let us debate it, and let us have our input. And I'll say it one more time, instead of getting, becoming fuel on the fire.
Now's your opportunity, guys, before we, any discussion?
I'll just reemphasize, I think, you know, in terms of leadership, financial management, and economic development, those were what I ranked you the highest on. I think you have an outstanding performance in those areas. I think, and, you know, obviously in the strengths that were listed, those are listed as your strengths by all of us. And, you know, I think that what Mark is saying is, you know, I'll just try and paraphrase it a little bit. I think that your passionate, your passion about issues brings your political side into the discussion. And that ends up, I think, sometimes being problematic. So I am often interested in your political, you know, interpretation of something. But I think maybe it's something better that is spoken about not at this table, you know? And if people, some members may want to hear it, some members may not. So maybe just having that as something to consider when you are discussing information with us, you know, knowing that we're coming to the table. If that is carved out, everybody has the option to find that out from you independently. So, you know, I think better to keep that cloaked.
Well, I think that's a fair criticism, what Mark said and what you didn't. I think that's fair. I'm a passionate person. That pays you great dividends, because I work probably harder than most people would. Because frankly, this is my job, and it's my hobby too. So I work weekends, and don't mind, and don't ask for anything, any recognition or anything for that. You all know I do. But it's also, that passion is also something that comes to the table, as you said, sometimes in inappropriate ways. Being too strong-willed with respect to making a presentation, past the point of where perhaps I should. And I think that's fair, because I know I do that. So, point, point well made. I mean, that's something, I will tell you honestly, I've been working on this year. Trying to, trying to back off a little bit. Tried to keep it to fewer incidents than others. Tonight's conversation was a fascinating one with respect to that, that's for sure.
Again, we all have our passions, Kevin, and that was, you know, that was my passion coming out. And, you know, next week it will be, you know, Mark, but that's.
And I respect criticism like that, because at the end of the day, I think that's honest, I think it's thoughtful. I think it's intended to be helpful. And that's what I appreciate from the board, and what any employee appreciates from their employer, is helpful criticism. Criticism that's intended to identify a weakness and allow you to get better at it. And that's the kind of criticism that, you know, I can do something with. So, okay.
And I apologize, I couldn't meet with Kevin last week. I could not get that done. So I couldn't have the one-on-one, I don't even know if the board did. So I get three nods over.
Kevin, the only, the only thing I can say is that, you know, when Jim and I came up with this last year, and we told you, you know, we're going to take this category of supervision, and these things are going to fall under it. I think you need to realize that when, when we have that header of supervision, and it says, does the town manager adequately supervise department heads? And that whole thing. I think that when you give us your update, if you keep that header sort of in mind when you're, when you're filling out your spreadsheet of, you know, what's happening. I mean, if something's complete, it's completed. But, you know, you might want to say, like, you know, I worked with Randy and, you know, his crew. And, and we, you know, we had a little, you know, we worked through some issues or something. And that way, it gives us the like, oh, he did, he, you know, he didn't just do this on his own, and he worked with somebody, and, you know. So that, that supervision is, it's more of an explanation of how you supervised doing those goals that we set for you under that first header. You see what I'm saying? Because I think that way, you have a better understanding of how we're going to gauge you. I mean, you can say that, you know, I, you know, I did all of these reviews of employees. Well, okay, you know, but how did you do them? You know, that kind of, that kind of a thing, you know, just, I think we, that's what we're looking for, is how you did it, how it was handled, and that kind of thing, you know? I don't want you to write a book, because there's not enough room, and Lorraine gets smaller and smaller on her spreadsheet, so it's going to get more and more difficult. But I think if you have a better understanding of, that's what we're looking at, is the main subject would be, you know, if it's supervision, or if it's leadership, or it's, you know, community relations. We're looking at the big picture from the goals that we set for you, and your responses, that's all we have to go by. Because I'm not up here either, I've, you know, got my job. I see you, if there's emergency, or there's something special going on, that's when I see you, or at the meetings. So I don't, you know, I don't take time to call you every day to say, hi, you know, everything okay? I'm assuming if something bad is happening, you reach out to us, so. But that's the only way we know, is by what you send us as your, you know, quarterly reports, and your goals and objectives that we set for you. So I guess maybe if, you know, you just take a better look at that header in relation to the goals that are underneath it.
Yeah, I can try to do that. I think it would be helpful. I have sent out three of those quarterly reports this year.
Right.
And I didn't get a single question from anybody on one of them, not a single question.
No, because you, you told us, you know, what's complete, and.
I don't know, what I'm saying is, there's a, the reason I think I write those.
Is to keep us updated, yeah.
You can't have an idea of what's going on with these goals.
Yep.
And the hope is that while we're in the year, that if you see something in one of those reports that's amiss, that somebody will say something, so we can not wait till the end of the year, and then find out it's not going the way we want it to go. What I'm saying is, you know, those reports have all been delivered, but I haven't had any feedback on them. I know you all busy.
Well, I didn't, I didn't feed back on, because I didn't want to get into an open meeting law situation. If we were going to debate over a report that you make individually, it would be something you would typically do at the table.
Maybe an improvement would be to put the board's report on the agenda.
Yeah.
And budget a half an hour, forty-five minutes.
At the table. At the table, yeah.
Okay, Kev, what are you doing? Because the problem is, with such a giant set of goals and objectives, and this is a big body of work here, folks. And just basically a line or two to report on each one of those. Sometimes I feel like, God, I wish I had more room to write, but then now I'm trying to, do I get the work done, or do I spend all my time writing reports? So I'd try to bullet it, but I think if we have a discussion at the table, and you have an opportunity to say, what does this mean? Or, are you really doing this? It's not, oh, here's a good example. There was, there's a goal in here for me to present you with an increase to fire alarm fees. You set that goal, I didn't. And then when I presented it, it went over, trying to think of the proper metaphor here. Lead balloon, lead balloon, I think, is the way it went off.
I don't think any of our goals were that specific.
I'll show it to you.
We had a goal that said fire alarm increase, or?
Don't remind, don't, never.
I'll find it in a minute. In any event, that's a good one. Indicative, because I thought you wanted a proposal on that.
I think the chief wanted that, not the board of selectmen, and you brought it to us.
It came to us, and we basically said, if that's what you want to do, give us some more information. But we didn't say, set a goal of raising the fee for a fire department issue, we'd have a look in that detail.
I thought, I got to look in here, but, because when I went through it, I thought I saw a goal that said, you know, to do the research and make a proposal.
I mean, all the goals are.
None of my goals, right?
Well, you stepped under the goal. I, I'll go through in a minute, but it's, the example that I'm trying to, when I'm trying to use it is to say that if there is something there, and we're having this discussion on the agenda, that's an opportunity for the board to give a little bit.
So that it hits.
Better direction, like, no, don't, don't go over there, that's not something I want you to do. We actually spent quite a bit of time and work, working that proposal up, and it was pretty clear after one discussion that you weren't interested. And I did, I did send you a memo and say, that's off the table, I've withdrawn it, reading.
Well, that's what, it does need to be come to the table, that's something, maybe a list, like Jim's chairman update, you have the list, say, this is what I'm working on. Give me some guidance here, because for us to individually tell you that, you shouldn't do that.
Right. It's got to happen, it's got to happen here in the meeting, it's got to happen.
And we did, we had, we've, we've had this discussion before, when the town manager's reports went month, they were monthly.
Right.
And it was just too onerous, and it was basically taking a day to do it. So we specifically said we're going to go quarterly, and it was going to be on the agenda to discuss, so this is a.
Monthly just, monthly just gets to be burdensome in terms of trying to get it done, and board members taking the time to look at it with all else you've got going on too, so, okay.
All right, let me just, I just want to cover briefly, if you pick up his contract, Kevin's contract. Under town manager's evaluation, and I'll just, I'll be brief. The board shall review and evaluate the town manager every year on or about March first, but in no case later than May first. So this is why we're doing it now. Said review and evaluation shall be based on the goals and objectives developed jointly by the board and the town manager. Further, the chairman of the board shall provide the town manager with a summary of written statements of the evaluation findings of the board, and shall provide an adequate opportunity for the town manager to discuss his evaluation with the board. And it's part of the, your town manager's personnel file, chapter, verse, and section is in here. So that's what we did tonight.
Yep.
B, and this is what we have to do in June. Annually, during the month of June, the board and town manager shall define the goals and objectives which they determine necessary for the proper operation of the town in the attainment of the board's policy and objectives, and shall further establish a general priority among those various goals and objectives. And the goals shall be reduced to writing. They shall generally be attainable within the time limits specified, and within the annual operating capital budgets for the town, et cetera. Now, if you remember, last year, we took those goals and objectives, and we got rid of a lot of things.
Right.
And we had a candid discussion, is it important, or is it just, you know, so we got rid of it.
Prioritize them from one through thirty-seven or something.
And we went from sixty down to forty. So maybe it's the time in June, we have that discussion and figure out where this is going to go. Now, that is section five, on section four, on the salary. Section A was, is the annual salary with the requirements. And then B says, the town agrees to consider a pay increase for the town manager to be effective on July first of each year of this contract. Town manager evaluation process as noted in five of this contract should be the basis for the board. So what we just did was, we gave him an evaluation per his contract, and on section B, it says, we shall consider a pay raise. Now, it doesn't have to be until July, but do we want to do this tonight, we're with the current board? Or do we want to wait till June, up till July to do that? Or do we want to wait till June, up till July to do that?
Can I ask a question? Is this something that would come under the category of non-union contract negotiations? That we would discuss it in executive session?
Not negotiating, I think we're talking.
We did it openly last year.
Do we?
We did.
It could be wrong.
But I, I, you know, it's, it's late, it's ten-thirty, I would suggest, it was brought up by Ginny earlier about next week possibly, Kevin brought up, we're not gonna get the executive session minutes tonight, we need to discuss this. So I would suggest to the chair that we have another meeting next week solely for the two executive session things and to continue this conversation about town manager's contract and/or raise or blah, blah, blah. Nothing else. Otherwise, because that, two weeks ago, we were supposed to just do executive session minutes. We came in, I think it's a little early, we never even got to it because one subject got blown out portion, it was supposed to take five minutes, took two and a half, three hours.
Yeah.
So we just can't put anything else on the agenda. It's the year wrap-up cleanup before the election. We get it done and we move on.
Before we consider that, the question, those are good points, the question of having the salary review in a public session, open meeting or in a public executive session to be released later?
They could have it publicly last year.
I'm comfortable with it either way, whatever, whatever the board's comfortable with. That's frankly easier, you know, compared to this.
Touche. You guys available next Tuesday?
I, I do want to make one request and I appreciate what Mark said because with respect to salary adjustment, if any, I really appreciate if the board would take that up prior, prior to the election for two reasons. Number one, if there is a personnel change on the board, that's putting the new member in a bad place. And Ginny, I'm sure you remember that last year because you had that very decision to make based on somebody you'd never worked with. So it's really, the reason the evaluation and the contract is written the way it is is so that you five folks will do it, the people that I've worked for will make that decision. Secondly, if you should decide favorably in any way, that needs to get budgeted because my budget is not large enough or flexible enough to take any, any even small hits in terms of expenses that are not budgeted. So what I, you know, we handle that in articles.
What's that? We just want to increase it.
Well, there you go. I got, I knew that was coming, I saw you grinning.
There's those threats again, Kevin, there's those threats again.
I know, talk about leading with, leading with my chin.
Let me go back a step because I remember doing this contract, we did change the date and that's why it says by May.
Right.
May first.
Because of that.
Because we did not want a second, we didn't want new board members evaluating them on history.
Right.
We did not require the salary review to be done by May. That's why it goes to July because just like we do with other contracts, I can review, I can, I can look at a police, a, a, a fire chief's contract, not having worked with him for five years and still give an educated opinion on a merit or a bonus based on, and I think we've done a very good job of putting those three years in paper.
Right.
On paper, so it's in his personnel file. So somebody coming in in June can give them, you know, something, they can give them a salary adjustment and sometimes that's better because they have a set of fresh eyes that they can look at the whole perspective and not have baggage from the year before, good or bad. So.
I think we should keep the baggage that we have now for next year.
What I'm saying, I, I don't think we need to, it would be nice to, and I was prepared to talk about it tonight, certainly we can do it at the next meeting. But I don't want to be pressured into doing this in May because new board members might come, I don't think, I don't think that's part of the, the dates in there is sensitive to the election and the salary.
Isn't.
Is not. And I think I was, I remember changing those dates for that reason.
Well, Mark, you want to move, I mean, if people are comfortable for next week, we can do it next week. We have other, you know, instead of doing executive session tonight, do we have anything else that we have to do tonight, Kevin?
No, you get through the warrant.
Yeah.
So I think you get through the warrant, budget's done, capital budget's done. So I think those three topics that Mark mentioned, the two matters in executive session, non-union personnel, mine would be the third, and then the minutes would be the four things, so.
There are three non-union personnel, three non-union personnel.
Fire chief's contract, CFO's review, town manager review, but not the review, it's just the, the discussion with respect to salary adjustment or not on two of those. And on the fire chief, that's discussion on the contract. And in the case of the minutes, you will not run into the rule of necessity, i.e. we won't have at least three of you that were physically here, but still I think it's better to clean that up because I've gone through all of them and, you know, I've got a list of recommendations.
We can.
Very few that you can't release.
We can.
You can release almost all of them now.
Okay.
And it could, it could only be a possibility of one change, so.
Yeah, there's a couple sets that you can't.
No, I'm saying, as far as the numbers, it's not a.
No, that's what I'm saying, you won't run into that rule of necessity so-called where it takes three to adopt the minutes and you don't have three that were actually here. You'll, you'll have four no matter what. But I'm just suggesting if you can take the time, I don't think it'll take you a lot of time because most of them I think are pretty much easy to release and might take us fifteen, twenty minutes to go through them. But at the end of the day, it'll get it done. I was frankly shocked when we went through here in the office to create the last column for you, accepted or unaccepted, and found that we had almost a year's worth of minutes that hadn't even been accepted yet, much less released. So, and that's, that's our fault in here, we're just so busy, we hadn't gotten around to it, putting it back on the agenda. So that really should get done. And as I say, I think it'd be very quick, very quick.
So we'll meet next week then?
Four-hour meeting.
Another one. Motion to adjourn.
Motion made, seconded, who was in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks.
Thank you, Foxborough.